Well, it's good to see you, bud. How are you?
No, I'm good.
Oh, who's coming here?
I have my keys already here.
And she came.
She was like, "Oh, yeah." I'm back. Yes, sir. There's a new cheese. They're leaving.
Oh, God. Yeah, I'm sorry. No, no, don't leave my phone. I didn't do it. I turned it.
I'm going to be a little bit more. Here, I can just like. Right.
Yep. So, loose. Why I was sitting there.
So, I changed the power.
Not at all. Hey, what's up? Hey, nice to meet you. Hey, Greg. Did you say, did I still have a line out there, or is pretty much everybody on? Did you notice if there was a line out there, or did I have?
Two or three.
Two or three, okay. All right. Stephanie? Are we on? All right, I'm gonna wait about two more minutes, just to get the last folks in and sit down. All right, everybody. Welcome. I am going to call this town council meeting to order, and to start, I would ask that you all join us in the pledge allegiance.
On the pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got just a couple of quick items, and then I'll spend a few minutes talking to you a little bit about the citizens' comment process, and just what's gonna go on today, and what you can, what you can expect. But the first item is the approval of minutes, and I've got two items here. Minutes of the town council meeting of August sixth, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any changes, comments, edits?
None.
None? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Second item is the approval of the minutes of town council meeting of September tenth, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any changes, comments?
None.
All right. All approved?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Again, welcome. I wanna take, I'm assuming, first of all, it's nice to see a really big crowd, I appreciate that. I'm also gonna assume that for many of you, this is probably the first time that you've attended a town council meeting. So I do wanna give you a little, just a little bit of sense of what's gonna happen, how things work. And I'll both talk about the comment section, so you'll have a sense of how that will operate. And then I also wanna talk to you very briefly about the, the actual workings of the council, and when we get to the item, which I assume you're all here to talk about, you'll have a sense of what's going on. First question I'd like to ask, could I just have a show of hands of how many people think that they are going to want to address the council with comments? Okay. A number, but not huge, okay? What I do wanna do is, I wanna make sure that we give everybody who wants to speak an opportunity to do that. Now, consequently, by, you know, our town ordinances, we limited, we limits citizen comments to thirty minutes, but I'm gonna, well, no, in total. In total. You had everybody go, "What?" Talked about, no. By ordinance, we limit it to fifteen, or thirty minutes, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna let that go, because I wanna make sure that, that everybody who has come in today and has something they wanna say, that you've got that opportunity. I would ask, though, that you be succinct. We do have normally a requirement that anybody who speaks is limited to five minutes. I'm usually pretty loose about that, but that's normally because we only have, you know, a couple of people speaking. If we have this many, and every person goes to five minutes, it, it will be a long day. So, I don't, you know, what I would ask you to do is just, when you, when you do speak, try to be succinct. Do pay attention, as I know you will, to the people that have spoken in front of you, if, if they've already made a comment that, that, that you wanted to make, maybe there's, you know, an opportunity to build on that. But, but having said that, my goal is to make sure that all of you who wanna speak today walk away here feeling like you had that, had that opportunity. So, we're gonna do our best, but I also want you to, to be thoughtful about the fact that there's a lot of people, and, and we could be here a long time if, if that occurs. I also know, you know, this, this town council has gotten a lot of input over the last five or six weeks. Trust me, I've gotten a lot in the last two hours. And, and the one thing I will tell you, regardless of what you hear today, is that there are strong opinions on, with regards to the cap, there are strong opinions on both sides of this issue. So I would ask you, as you are listening and as you are speaking, to just reflect upon the fact that whatever your view is, and no matter how well thought out it is, and how legitimate it is, there probably is someone else in this room who has a very different view. And so, I just want us to be respectful of that. I, I would ask that, 'cause it doesn't always happen, but sometimes, in an issue where there is a lot of, of passion, that sometimes you do get clapping and commenting and so on. And I would ask you not to do that, and I say that primarily because, for many people, for me, getting up in a group this size and speaking can be very intimidating. And I don't want somebody who, who just follows somebody who got a round of applause for taking one view, and that person's getting up to say something different, to feel intimidated and concerned. I want everybody to feel comfortable. I want them to feel like they, they were heard. Two last things on, on citizens' comments. This is not, the process is one we've used for years, this is not a debate. This is not a two-way conversation. This is an opportunity for you to help us understand what your thinking is, what your concerns, and, and the goal is to help us make, make better decisions. So, once I open it up for citizens' comments, what I will ask each person who is going to comment to get up, they're gonna go to the podium. I need you to go to the podium, not stand at your chair, because that's the only way we can get it into the public record and, and properly have this as part of the meeting. Simply tell us your name and tell us your address, and, and then go for it. Say, say whatever it is that you would like us to, to think about. I generally will not answer questions during, you know, if you ask a question, we generally will not, because we wanna keep the discussion going. What we will try to do is keep track of what some of them are, and then when we get to our discussion, we'll try to make sure, when we talk, that we try to answer the questions we heard. And I obviously will answer the obvious, I mean, if somebody says, "Is the sky blue?", I'm not gonna say, "Well, I'll let you know in twenty minutes." I'll ask, no, I'll answer, I'll answer the question. So, that is, that's how citizens' comments is gonna work. Now, bear with me one more minute. I also wanna explain how the, how the discussion process will work, so you know what's gonna happen up here. We have three items on the agenda today, two of them are related to short-term rentals. The third one is, is another item related to, we'll talk later, a very good project that MUSC is, is considering nearby. The first of the two objects, topics are the, the amendments to the ordinance that I guess one hundred percent of you are here to, to talk about. I wanna highlight a couple of things. One, remember, this is a first reading of the ordinance. That means that nothing that we do here today is final. We're gonna vote, but nothing we do is final. Between now and the second reading, we are wide open to making changes, altering the amendments, which is a good thing. It means that we still have opportunity to follow up on issues that we might have, we have opportunities to continue to get feedback. So, whatever happens here, now, I'm not gonna kid you, whatever happens here today is a pretty good indicator of where I think the council's headed, but it's not a final, and, and things can change. The second thing I wanna highlight is, this is the first time that this council has actually met and talked about this ordinance face-to-face. Now, for all of us who worked in business, we'll go, "How the heck could that happen? I mean, why would you get this far without sitting around and, and hashing it out?". And the answer is, because that's the way the state municipal government rules work, that council members cannot get together and talk about and do business unless they are in a public, open meeting like this. Now, that is not to say a lot of work has not gone on, it's not to say that, that in, that in legally permissible ways, there have lots of been, lots of discussion between the study group that has been taking the lead in preparing this ordinance, have not gotten input one-on-one, and so on. So I don't wanna suggest that everybody's coming in here kinda like, "Oh, this is the first time we've seen it", but it is, in fact, the first time that we has, as a group, have really hashed our way through it. So, the, the last thing I wanna say is a procedural thing. So, in order for the town council to actually discuss this, we first actually have to go through the process of making a motion to approve the ordinance, and we have to have a second to approve the ordinance. And those two things have to happen before we can actually talk. And I wanna make that clear, because my fear otherwise is, if you're not familiar with the system, you're gonna hear me ask for a motion to approve, you're gonna hear someone else second, and everybody's gonna be gasping, going, "Oh, my God, they're gonna, they're gonna pass this thing without even having any discussion". And, and, and I wanna make sure you know that's not the case. We have to go through that process before we, before we actually talk. Out of the discussion today, four things could happen, some I think are more likely than others. We could vote to table this item. I don't think that's gonna happen, 'cause there has been a lot of work put in it. We, out of our discussion, may have some votes or motions to amend the amendment while we're talking, and ultimately vote on something that has some amendments to it that come out of our discussion. We could take a different approach. We may identify areas where we have concerns or issues, but we aren't ready to make an amendment. We may instead instruct staff to say, between now and the second hearing, or the second reading, would you go off and do some additional work, and consider three or more alternatives about this issue or that issue? So there's, so there are several things that can happen, and obviously, we can vote and reject the ordinance, and just not have it pass. So, I just, again, I'm sorry for all of that conversation upfront, but I want you all to feel like you are comfortable and know what we're doing. Our goal is to, is to do this as transparently as we can, to hear your input. Now, I know when we're done, some of you are gonna be very pleased with what we do, I know some of you are absolutely not gonna be pleased with what we do, and I don't, at the moment, know which is which. But we're trying our best to, to get, to get your input and move forward.
Greg, for your information, you talked about substantive changes that may or may not take place between the first reading today and the second reading. And if, I know the wording on what constitutes substantive changes is kind of wobbly. What would it take for council to consider changes substantive enough, that instead of having a second reading, a second reading in November, it would be a first reading?
I don't think, I'm gonna turn to my town administrator and, and my attorney, 'cause I may not be smart enough to answer that question, but I think that there probably would not be anything that I imagine that would be substantive enough to, that it would not still fit within the second reading. Stephanie, am I right?
You're, you're correct, I'm trying, no, no, you're correct, in terms of trying to think what could that be?
Yeah, I can't think of one that would.
I can't, can't think of anything that would create such a change that we would have to then throw this completely out and start all over again with first reading. But depending on what comes out of today's meeting, I would be able to make a better determination after today's meeting.
I mean, I could throw some out that would be so, so ridiculous, I'm afraid I'd make everybody afraid, you know, I mean, if you turned the cap from twenty percent to a hundred percent, that would be, now, that's never gonna happen, but, so, no, I, I can't think of anything. All right, so with that, I wanna go ahead and get started. So what I would ask is that, if you would like to address the council, that you go ahead and go to the podium, give us your name and address, and go from there. I, again, we can sort of, we'll start off in a way, if somebody wants to raise their hand and go first, I'll just point, and maybe, and then I'll try to.
There's a list out there, people who saw.
Yeah.
Do you wanna go by the list?
I don't think so.
Correct side.
Is it? Oh. It's not out there, it's actually right here. Sorry, whomever you are. So how do we, how about if we start off with Ellen Allred?
Mayor Weaver, honorable members of the council, my name is Ellen Allred. I live at 581 Wimble, and I wanna say at the outset that I applaud the effort of the council as a new homeowner on the island. Prior to that, I owned a condominium over on Turtle Point, on number seventeen, right next to the green. So I've been in both the condominium property owner status, as well as now a homeowner. So I wanna thank you for not kicking the can down the road, and addressing this issue, which I think is very important to me, and of course, I only speak for me when I'm here today. And I hope that you do come to a conclusion and move this agenda, and don't let some that might wanna kick it sideways, or just put it off. I hope you go ahead, and so to speak, can put this ball in the end zone, because it needs to be addressed. I think at the outset, town of Kiwa Island, or perhaps even places within the island, R1, R2, inside the second gate, whatever, need to decide, what do we wanna be? What do we want it to be, our neighborhood, or perhaps the island? Do we wanna be innkeepers? Do we wanna be homeowners? I can tell you, from having a condominium and a homeowner, I've seen the effect of renters. Whether it's cigarette butts that are thrown on the grass, whether it's trash, whatever, we've all been there. And I would submit that if you recall when you owned a home, or if it's somewhere else in the United States, in that home where you made vacation here, or whether now you own here and live here permanently, did you wanna have three or four renters of homes on your street back in Columbus, Ohio, Cincinnati, St. Louis, Nashville, Darien, Connecticut? I submit, probably not. And that really is true here, too. People don't take care of the property, the renters don't, because they're here for a week, they're here for two weeks, or whatever. Many times I walked out of my condominium and said, "I wish I could catch the guy that threw those cigarette butts down on the ground. I wish I could catch the guy that threw that water bottle over there". And where I live now, on Wimble, I've seen five cars on a driveway, a four-bedroom home. Five cars. And then you see the car parked on the grass, well, that renter may think that's fine. That renter may think that's okay, that's the cost of doing business, I'll fix it, 'cause I've got the rent coming in. But it does affect the habitability, it does affect where I live, down the street, to see that. And if people wanna have rental properties for their revenue purposes, or to cover the costs of owning a property here on Kiwa, I would submit, I don't think that's in the long-term best interest of property values. And if people that would say, "Well, no, no, we bought because we could rent", let's see the evidence, that people that wanna buy a home here and invest a lot of money in a property are thinking, "I'm gonna be next to renters, when I'm there with my children, or my grandchildren, or if I live there in retirement, I really wanna have renters next to me, even though I wouldn't want them back home, wherever I was before I may have moved to Kiwa, or bought a property down here, it's okay in this environment". I don't think it is. So I hope that you will make sure that people that would talk about property values, because that always hits people in the pocketbook. If you do that, it's a scare. "Oh, your values will be worthless. I'm worried about the value of my property when I'm here. I'm not so much worried about, well, when I sell it, am I gonna get a, a nice little margin back? Am I gonna make a nice profit, and therefore sacrifice the quality of the habitability of my home, or my condominium, now, when I'm here with the family, or the kids, or whatever? I'd rather have it in the present, in real time, that quality. And as far as the renters are concerned, I support the ordinance, albeit, I would prohibit renters. I certainly would have preferred a ten percent cap, but I will support this ordinance, and as I said, in conclusion, please move this agenda. Thank you for not kicking it down the road, addressing it. Don't get sidetracked, don't get diverted, get your job done. You don't get paid a lot, so I thank you also for your service.
Thank you very much.
With that, I conclude, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Dave DiStefano.
And, and by the way, I am so, I can keep the times closer to five, if I start motioning, well, Dave, I know you'll keep it under five, but if I do start motioning, I don't want anybody to feel offended. Do that in all cases. Thank you very much.
My name's Dave DiStefano, I live at 31 Burrows Hall, I'm a full-time resident, I wanna make it clear, as a member of the Kika Board, I am not here as a member of the Kika Board, I'm here as a resident of the island. A little background on my ownership and rental history, started coming here in eighty-five, rented a condo four years in a row. Eighty-nine, bought a condo, and we put that on the resorts rental program, it was there for sixteen years. We built a house in 2009, and that was on the rental program for six years, until we moved here in 2014, and since then, I've been renting it for the first two weeks of July. Two weeks, as we all know, is free income, 'cause it's not taxable. I'm concerned, though, that I might be limited to two years for the rest of my life. As my experience with renters, we've never had a problem with a renter, either in the condo or with our home, and that was for a couple of reasons. Once, we maintained both properties extremely well, the other is, that we limited the number of renters. I know the ordinance now says, two per bedroom plus two. We told the resort, four in the condo, six in the house. I don't think I've ever had more than five in the house. The renters have been great, they've left great comments, and we've had some experience with two houses across the street, which are no longer on rental programs. There were three-bedroom houses that continually had eight people in it. When you have a three-bedroom house with eight people in it, you have two families, and that becomes a problem. Or you have eight college kids, which is one situation, with seven vehicles trying to park in one driveway. So, is, is one amendment that I would request in this, is forget the two per bedroom plus two, just go to two per bedroom. I don't know where the other two people would sleep in my house if they put eight people in there, and how are they gonna sit down at the breakfast table when there's only six seats? Okay? Problem is enforcement, not too many renters. Putting caps at twenty and forty percent, and not putting caps on the rest of the properties, is not gonna prevent bad renters, bad owners, or bad agents. An analogy to putting caps on it, is say, the way, the way to cut down on the traffic on Bowhick Road is to get, everybody with an unnumbered driver's licenses gets one every other year. Road is to get, everybody with an unnumbered driver's licenses gets one every other year. So only 50% of the people can have a license. I've never seen any situation in my entire legal career where when you apply for a license to do something, it's limited by the number of people that have that license other than liquor licenses. Doctors, lawyers, anybody else, you apply for a license, you pay the fee, you get the license if you're qualified. So I think it's the wrong way to go to solve the problems that we have here. Secondly, Kiwa is not a retirement community, nor is it solely a resort community, it's both. The success of this island is the overall income that comes to this island through renters that spend money at the resorts, spend money at Freshfields, get taxes to the town, et cetera, et cetera. The tourists drive the economy here. We only have 1,700 permanent residents on the island. And if renting, renting is, if it were banned, the resort would die. Okay? So I think the resort, and I'm not speaking for the resort, but I think this cap might have an impact on the economy of the island. The problem is the problematic renters, too many in one house, problematic agents who don't care about anything but getting people in that house, and absentee owners, they only care about the dollars. I was recently in a house that was on a rental program for 10 years, it's the same age of my house. I was in that house, that house looked like it was 25 years old. It was a five-bedroom house, they were renting 10 to 12 people at a time. That's a problem house. That shouldn't be allowed. There's got to be limits on the number of people in the house, et cetera. And the other is, I don't know how we came up with 20% and 40% between R1 and R2. I have yet to see the logic in that. Where's the data that supports it? What percentage are we at now with R1? For instance, 2001, I always give the first two weeks of July to rent. What if I want to rent during the PGA? That means you have to walk down and apply for a license, be told I'm on a five-year waiting list. Well, for three weeks, I need a license, correct?
I'll address that later.
All right. Maybe something's new. The other thing is, a house that rents for two or three weeks, or minimum three or four weeks for a year versus a house that rents year-round, either way, each house is going to take a percentage of that cap. So it just mathematically doesn't work. If you have a lot of low, low frequent renters, they gobble up the cap, it's going to be a lot less renters here than if everybody on the cap is renting year-round. So where's the analysis of exactly how many renters we're looking at? And then we get to $1,500 for a license. Well, it's 200 for some people and 1,500 for another people. I don't get the logic behind that at all. You can either do it on a per-week basis, a fixed fee, it's always been a percentage of your income. And I don't know why that's changed. $1,500, if somebody, that one extra week that kicks them into needing a license, it's going to be 1,500 bucks for one week's more rental. It's very preventive. It punishes the people that are already here. I've had experience with great renters on my street. It's nice to have people on the street, it's a very, very quiet street. The good renters come in, they obey all of the rules, you say hi to them, you talk to them, they ask you about the island, you meet them on the golf course when you're playing, you might encourage them to come down here and buy things. Caps will not solve the problem. I have a few suggestions that I think will help solve some of the problems as opposed to caps. As I said before, only two per bedroom, not two per two-plus. Require all renters to have an agent approved and licensed by the town with a physical presence within three miles of the first gate, where renters have to check in, get their vehicle passes, their rule sheets, et cetera, as opposed to getting their vehicle passes in the mail. You don't know who's coming, who's actually going to enter that unit. I had that problem across the street, the parents rent the house and eight college kids show up. And then the eight college kids from the other two houses they rented that week, they all came to that house for headquarters, we got 24 college kids in a house. Require the person that books and pays for the rental to be the person that checks in, that would prevent that problem. Coordinate with the resort, Kika, to establish an enforcement method and a proper funding of that enforcement. And enforcement's going to be not having a couple of enforcement officials here from nine to five. Somebody's got to be in a vehicle, driving around with a cell phone, okay? 24/7 if necessary during the peak weeks. And if you have a problem, you call that number and they can go over and address the problem immediately. And if it requires the sheriff, they can call the sheriff and have the sheriff come over and take care of it. It's enforcement that's needed, not caps. I'm concerned as an attorney, caps are going to result in somebody filing an action for a taking. I was getting $50,000, I was getting $50,000 a week net, I mean, a year, net, on my little three-bedroom house for six years, that's $300,000 I made. You take that away from me, that's a taking. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dave. And we'll, a couple of the questions that you asked, we'll answer when we get into discussion. The one thing I did want to clarify, in the revised proposal, that 40% cap for R2s went away. And so we'll explain, it's out of the process. Okay, next I have Patrick Shepherd, is it Patrick Shepherd?
Yes.
We did get you.
I'm going to read a little bit, so I apologize with my notes. I do want to mention, it was a little disconcerting and upsetting to hear you prejudge already, that you wouldn't table-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you please state your address for the record?
Oh, Patrick Shepherd, 143 Hooded Burganser. That's in Vanderhorst Plantation. So 30, I was a little disconcerting to hear that you were already prejudging even before anybody spoke. Well, we're not going to table something. Well, we're not going to do this. Please hear people out before you prejudge. I feel like this is the impeachment of the Democrats prejudging. 33 years coming to Kiwa, five years owner, and I would say that we were in the last 18 months of moving here. Now, last night, I told my wife, I think I want to sell. The policies, I want to go back to an email that I wrote to you a week or so ago, and I want to quote something that you responded to. I had mentioned, can you give me, I asked Stephanie, can you give me three, four, or five years of business license history for the town, so I can understand, what's the problem? Are we having a huge surge? Are we having it steady? What's going on? And the answer was, sorry, Patrick, we don't have the information. We actually, for the last 18 months, have been focusing on the licenses, and focusing on understanding who has license and who doesn't. So how can you have a baseline of 20%, 40%, 40%? How can you have a baseline and not understand where you are currently, what happened the last three years, what happened the last four years? You have no baseline. So these numbers are fictitious as it relates to the percentages, and it's just made up as far as I'm concerned. As it relates to, you know, some of the proposals, the proposal is really, in my view, a zoning law change and not a short-term rental change. We have casique, we have the settlement. If we want to expand those and do those things, we have those things to do. So you're going to hurt the majority of the island by doing this. And when I researched in the U.S., internationally, on those communities that had caps, it was really about two things. It was about availability of housing and the cost of housing. We don't have those two issues here. Actually, we have over 450 properties for sale on the island right now. So it's actually the reverse, which I think could get even worse. I think also we need to go back 10 years as it relates to economics. With the market drop, with recession, almost depression, there were many more homes on the market. That could, you know, recessions do happen, and I think people are thinking of good times and to put another strain on the market potentially, where people cannot have income, is a big issue as far as I'm concerned. As it relates to some of the other things, under the frequently asked questions, it said that the, under the revision ordinance, the town may limit the number of rental business licenses in R1 and portions of R2 zoning districts to be issued for that year. That was under the frequently asked questions. So what you're saying is, is that the town council can actually change it year to year? Why would you be a prospective owner when the town could turn around and say, you know what, you had that last year, I'm going to limit next year? That was within the questions that you answered, and I didn't see that in the ordinance, the actual policy, but it was in the questions. So I think that needs to be addressed. Other things that I would just mention really quick, between Kika, between the county, between the state, between the town, we have enough policies and procedures, they just need to be implemented and ruled against. However, one of the wordings that I have an issue with is, not that I would ever do this, but anybody that's cause for any liability could spend 30 days in jail. You're joking. That's actually in the policy, up to 30 days in jail. Is that some, is that really right? Is that how we want to be put out to the world?
It never happened.
Yes, it doesn't happen. But that doesn't require that to be in the policy. That's, that's an example, in my opinion, of the overreach that's happening right now. And then finally, I want to go back to the $1,500 question. There's a huge difference between the $1,500 and the $200. From my calculations on the statistics that I have, this will generate 750 to $1 million more in revenue for the town. So is this really a money play? And a zoning play? Are we looking for an extra $1 million? Let's be upfront with, let's be upfront with the owners as in residents. Do we need to raise taxes? Because this is really what it is. If it's up, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I estimate between 750 and $1 million in additional revenue. I don't see the town hiring staff of 750 to $1 million to enforce this. So to me, it's just raising taxes.
I need to, you're at the five minutes.
I'm sorry?
You're a little bit past the five minutes.
Okay. One last thing I would just mention. As it relates to just owning, individuals have put, well, there was a difference between a lot ownership and a homeownership, where for some reason now the ordinance states that the lot owner has up to three years to get a business license. However, that right is not for any owners of property of a building. So if I wanted to sell my home to my kids, if I wanted to sell my home and move closer to the beach, or stay on Kiwa, many individuals buy a home on Kiwa and then move. Just by moving within Kiwa, you're saying that I would lose that license. If anybody can say that's not going to drop my value, I'm not sure how they can say that. Whether it's family, whether it's being sold, or whether I want to move within Kiwa and get closer to the beach over time, or if I just want to put it in a trust. If I change the sale of my property, it doesn't state any of those reasons how I could potentially lose that license and the value.
Patrick, I need to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Greg Vanderwerker, 510 Reddy Turnstone. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the work. I know what you've done, put into it, and I know what you're going to go through to get it through, or not through, whatever. So I bless, bless your hearts. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the introduction. That, that was good, it was nice to have that set in ground rules. I am the unfortunate resident of renters now on both sides of me and one down below. On our street, there are 18 lots that are developable, 14 have houses, and four are rentals, at least according to your rental program data. So we're at 22% already, and I've developed a lot, and 28.5% of houses that are already on it. And unfortunately, they're right next to me and I'm having a lot of problems. But, and the gentleman who spoke first, I believe, was talking about zoning and the intent. I went to the zoning, it's Chapter 12, Article 2, Division 2, Section 1, 2-65, R1 Residential District. A purpose and intent. The purpose of the R1 zoning district is to promote stable residential neighborhoods consisting of low-density, detached, single-family dwellings and surrounding parks, golf courses, and open spaces. Activities and endeavors which might serve to mitigate against this purpose shall be prohibited or strictly regulated. And you might want to have council look into that because that should be militated, not mitigated. That's an incorrect word, if you make sense of that. So the intent is already there. It's supposed to be single-family residential. And I have people, I have two and three families coming in at a time next door to me, 10 and 12 people. And I was sorely disappointed that you maintained the occupancy of two persons per bedroom plus two, plus infants under the age of two are not counted. So I'm getting 12 people and seven cars next to me. And not only are they coming in for a week, as, I've been here since 94, full-time since 2005, so I've seen these changes. And I don't go anywhere else, this is my home. I don't come and go for two months, six months, I live here 24/7, 365. And it's a mess. Why, personally, I would prefer, and nobody else will agree in this room, but personally, I prefer that in R1, it'd only be one year, most, minimum should be one-year lease. But I know the pressure on you, you didn't get it happen. But why not maximum the six people and three or four cars in R1? I mean, and not only in the past were people coming in a week, it was Saturday changeover, you knew that there would be a lot of activity, Saturday they come in, Saturday they come out. We have people come in for weekends. We have 12 people turn over for two days. We've had people turn over for one day. This is not a residential zone. This is a public accommodation hotel zone. And everybody's worried about their property values. But when you run off all the full-time permanent residents, and this becomes just a Disney at the beach, it isn't going to be very attractive to anybody. And when the economy crashes, which it will, just like hurricanes always happen, no one predicts them, but they always happen, and people don't rent anymore because they don't travel, the resort goes down in their business work, this could be a ghost town. And it can be very unattractive to people, so. And I would prefer that you all table this and try to work out some of these comments that you're going to hear from people, because enforcement is always an issue, and it's not good right now. But even if it is good, when you have such a wide scope, it's hard to control. So whereas I've always encouraged people to move to Kiwa, I'm not doing that anymore. I have to tell, with serious reservations, say, really think about what you're doing. It's sad, but things happen.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much.
I think we have Wendy, Wendy Kulik next. Thank you, Greg.
For those of you who don't recognize me with my haircut, Wendy Kulik, 38 more I have a very short statement that Candace Dial asked me to read into the record. She says, anybody who knows me knows I am an inclusive, not an exclusive type of gal. I started coming to Kiwa Island in the 90s, renting for several years. When I finally bought property, it was important to me knowing Kiwa Island consisted of retirees, renters, vacationers, expats, second homeowners, people from the Midwest, Europe. Basically, I was looking for diversity, and I got it. It was important to me, as I was an expat at the time. It was important to me, as I was an expat at the time. I'm also the developer of Indigo Park. I, along with other homeowners, recognize we are experiencing a real estate recession on the island with a high inventory for sale. It's my ability to rent the homes I own that I'm able to survive and be nominated Sustainable Community of the Year, something Kiowa Island is proud of. I also would never want my town to discriminate by neighborhood or by house. It would be very un-Kiowa. I know in New York City, co-ops are not rentable, making them sell at a thirty percent discount because you cannot rent them year after year. When a new buyer comes in, they must be aware that the house they are buying is less valuable. I also know, by working with both Kiowa Island Real Estate and MLS brokers, that would decrease the pool of potential buyers. I urge council to keep current rental ordinance, the current rental ordinance in place, but enforce it before making any changes. Let's learn from the mistakes of Sullivan's Island and Hilton Head. Rental properties bring great revenue to the town of Kiowa through business licenses. Please do not punish or discriminate against property owners who rent their homes, villas, and condos. Truly a Kiowa Island fan, Candace Dial." My own comments dovetail with a number of things that people have said. Provide the data first. I haven't seen any data. I don't know what you do have or you don't have, but provide the data first. If there's a prob, if it's been enforced and there's a problem enforcing it, let's look at enforcement. But don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I know, Craig, you've had a very unfortunate experience with the house next to you that rents, and if I had that house next to me, I probably wouldn't be happy either. But let's look at something that is, that's fair. A number of people have commented on what a great neighbor the resort is, and we are so fortunate to have them here. Let's not do anything that's going to hurt them, because that hurts all of us. Now that we unfortunately had to put an Uber on the house, we're just about ready to put it back on the market. Prior to this ordinance, I wasn't worried about how we would be impacted. Now I am, because if somebody says to Tom, my real estate agent, if somebody says, "Can I rent this house?", he can't in all good conscience say, "Of course you can. Maybe yes, maybe no." Because may, we don't rent. We're here, we've been here full-time for thirty years. So somebody else coming along who might want to rent, might not be able to get a license. That's going to negatively impact our ability to sell the house. And just the last thing I want to say is, I won't ask for a round of applause for Chief Walz and Deputy Chief Stanley, but they did, you did such a fabulous job after Dorian, getting things back in order out here. Thank you very, very much for that.
Thank you, Wendy. I think, Tula?
Hi, my name is Tula Di Giovanni, and I live at fifty-one Cotton Hall. And I just, I have agreed basically with everything everyone has said, even the people who have said things pro. And in dealing, in talking to Alan, Alan, you must realize that when somebody sells their house, if they, if there are available licenses and the person who buys it decides to make it a rental, that person might be next door to you. No one can control, even with a twenty percent cap, who is going to be your next-door neighbor, and whether or not they will get a license to be able to rent their house. So as much as you might want that privacy and none of the headaches, you're not guaranteed to get it. I am a Realtor, and as a Realtor, I do feel that if we pass this ordinance, it will hurt us financially, primarily the homeowners. It will remove a class of buyers, the people who come, and they're younger, they're not ready to retire, and basically what they want is to be able to buy a house, enjoy it for their vacations, for their holidays, bring their families, their children, but then, at the times they're not using it, to be able to rent it out. Because by renting it, they can defray the high cost of taxes, the high insurance, as we all know, and the maintenance of the properties. So what's going to happen is these people are going to go to other areas if they need to find that type of a rental property. It will also, I believe, suppress the values. And if you look right now, even the high-end properties like Klaus's, and I have seen Klaus's house when he was on a tour, it was stunning, absolutely stunning. Even a house like that, there are many houses in your area that are rented, because they make wonderful, wonderful rentals, and they're rented at a very high value. Those weeks are a lot of money, because they have pools and they're just beautiful and they're right by the ocean. So I have a client who is a developer, is a multimillionaire, owns a phenomenal house on Kiowa, is thinking of buying property to build another house on the ocean, because he wants to have an ocean house as well, which is nice. And he has an investment property also near the ocean, that he's now thinking, "Oh, my God, what's going to happen if I have to sell this investment property?" So as a Realtor, I see the negative of this, and I feel that if somebody comes to me and says they don't want to be in an area where the rental units, I would take them to the settlement, I would take them to Kaseek. And I can't even imagine how I'm going to write up a contract for a sale, because if this, if this house right now that I have is bought by somebody who wants to make it a rental, I cannot transfer a license, that person is going to say, "Well, I want a guarantee. I want it contingent to my being able to get a license." So I can write up that contract, but how do I make that contingency happen, since he has to own the house before he can apply for a license? So then, will he walk away? Will he take a chance? I mean, I, just no idea how I'm going to write that up. So I, I, as an owner, and I'd like to now say, because I've lived on Kiowa, we've owned property in Kiowa since ninety-seven, we haven't rented our properties out, we've had friends, we've had family. Sometimes we're noisier than the renters. We had, somebody asked us to turn down our radio, and he was a renter. So it was, it's the truth. So I have to be honest, you know, we, we enjoy living in our house, and we've always enjoyed living in our houses here. But for us, it was a big investment, and it is a big investment, and is a big part of our asset portfolio. We're not terribly rich, you know, we're comfortable, but still, if somebody were to devalue my house, and I can't get the money I put in it, it's going to hurt. So before we bought on Kiowa, first we bought a condo, but before we bought land to be able to develop that land, we looked at the different neighborhoods, and we chose a neighborhood that we could rent out if we needed to, because you never know what life is going to bring. I didn't ever expect to have my parents living with me. I honestly didn't, you know, and I don't know where things are going to go for me down the road. I also want to be able to, maybe, once I can, take a couple of months a year and vacation, and go away. I still want to be a permanent resident here, so I would keep it within the seventy-four days, but that means I need that license. To be able to just go away and use my house as income to be able to pay for my vacation. I mean, what is wrong with that? It is an asset, and I should be able to use my asset as I need. So by, okay, I will wrap it up. So by limiting it to, to that, and, and a lot of the other things that have been covered already, you know, I had notes, there's no need for that. But I do have one other question, and this is, because of the ordinance, the way it is phrased, it states that the town believes the established Pacifics Regulations Licensing requirements for a short-term rental unit is necessary to protect the public health, safety, welfare, and et cetera, et cetera, and will help balance the community's interest in, in attracting visitors. And I wanted to know, how does implementing caps have anything to do with this statement? And that's my question to the town.
And I promise, when we get to the council discussion, I'm comfortable, we will answer that question.
Thank you.
Okay. Tula, and I don't want to put you on the spot at all, but you know, one, and you may not even be aware, but one of the things that we did is sent a pretty long questionnaire to the top real estate entities, asking them a lot of questions about the whole question of impact on property values and so on, and, and your firm did not respond to that.
I did not receive it. We went through a management change, as possible, but I would love to get it and respond to myself.
I'll send it to you. Okay.
Charlie La Puma, two-zero-one Horn Grieve Court. My comments are going to be short and somewhat historical. Some eighteen years ago, when the town was evaluating the potential long-term impact of short-term rentals, both economically and on the quality of community life, a law firm with relevant expertise was engaged to assist. At that time, as planning commissioner, I worked with an attorney named Dick Carlisle. Dick related the real-life situation, and I stress real-life situation, where short-term rentals reach what he called the tipping point, which was the start of the community's economic and, and quality of life demise. The process is straightforward. A community embraces short-term rentals. Short-term rentals increase and start to impact the quality of life of neighborhoods. Homeowners start to sell and go elsewhere, triggering even more sales. Property values plummet, savvy investors purchase houses for vacation rental purposes. At the tipping point, town image and community reputation are lost as quality of life and property values crater. To avoid this conundrum and protect Kiowa's reputation, quality of life, and our property values, strong and binding short-term rental controls, especially caps on rentals, in my opinion, are mandatory, and I support them. Thank you for your, for the chance to talk.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. By the way, for some of the people standing in the back, there are, they're hard to find, but if you're interested, there are a few seats scattered in between here.
We're not capping the seats.
Yeah. Yeah, so feel free, there are some in here. All right. Michael Di Giovanni.
Well, my words still not.
She did. So I'll just put, so I'll just put ditto on the, on the remarks. No, I'm good, is that?
The only thing I did of, as a council, okay.
And everybody feel like they have the chance.
Okay. I'm Mike Di Giovanni, and we live at fifty-one Cotton Hall. And I am against the caps. I believe you're opening a can of worms. I'm not sure if the council has considered the lawsuits that will surely come about because of this, and you end up spending our money to go against our own citizens or property owners. And I used the Rex Bluff debacle as a good example of that. I still would like to know how much money was spent on that. See, I didn't bring my notes. Again, my wife kind of said everything else I wanted to say, and I sure hope you seriously consider this, because I think it's going to have a negative impact on this island.
All right, thank you very much. Is it Ellen or Eileen Walkley?
Ellen Walkley.
Ellen Walkley. Thank you, Ellen. We're a little more than half through, by the way, just in case.
I'm Ellen Walkley. I live at five-seven-four Wimbrow Road. I've lived there for twenty-six years. I've also sold real estate for Kiowa Island for twenty-six years. I am representing my twenty-five colleagues that work with me at Kiowa Island Real Estate. Our only job is to sell Kiowa, and I've been showing homes and selling homes on Kiowa all this time. We are devastated by the prospect of this ordinance. We know, because we have people in our cars every day, that it is going to greatly harm values on Kiowa. I can't even tell you the percentage of people that may want to rent or would consider renting, but I do know that this right should never be taken away. Everything changes in life, including your financial situations, and to tell somebody that they will probably never get a license, and all the, all the times that I've sold and I've had a real estate license since nineteen-seventy-seven, the one thing I cannot sell is uncertainty. This is the most uncertain thing, and in all the years of real estate here, it is the worst thing that has ever happened to real estate on Kiowa. Every problem I have heard today is an enforcement problem, not a cap problem. We just need to put some enforcement in place and take this job seriously. I hope you will reconsider hearing from somebody who does this every day. No one loves this island more than I do, I can assure you. I have only wanted the best for it. I'm a property owner first, but I also know that all sellers, all owners become sellers. It's just not the final resting place, as much as we'd love it to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
My address is forty-one oh-nine Summer Duck. We're in the Nighthairn subdivision, and it is appropriate that I follow Ellen, since Ellen actually sold us the unit sixteen years ago. And I also heard a comment from the other real estate person that indicated that if in fact, we were not able to rent our unit when we purchased it, or at least had that option, we would not have bought on the island. It just would not have happened. And it is for that reason. At that time, we were part of that class, you know, we had full-time jobs, we lived elsewhere, and we came here and we vacationed four or five times a year. And obviously, to pay the bills, which it's incredibly expensive, having a house or a cottage on Kiowa Island, we needed to rent. It was, it was the priority. And now, here, here we are sixteen years later, we still are renting. We have never had any complaints in sixteen years. We do have a full-time resident that lives next to us that we're good friends with, and many of the units, of course, in Nighthairn are rentals. So I would just submit that, you know, based on my experience, it does sound like there are issues out there, but it does sound like an enforcement issue, that really, the, the rules and the laws that we have in place today need to be enforced. If there's issues, and if there's, let's say, some residents where there's multiple situations that occur, that I would think is more isolated. At the end of the day, it would be helpful to have more facts and figures to understand where the complaints and where the concerns are. So I would share that with you. I, I also would like to share a comment about the increase in fees. Before I get into that, I am a little confused on the R-one, R-two, and how that actually affects us in the Nighthairn subdivision, or doesn't affect us with what we're doing here. At some point, will a map be shared? I was looking in the, in the literature here, and I didn't see it, but obviously, I saw the, the.
The maps are on our website.
Okay.
And that?
They were a little hard to read, actually.
They, and that your address is not subject to the caps.
Okay, so not subject to the caps, but is subject to the increase in fees. No, not, two hundred dollars, right. Not, not a, that is an increase, I believe, still, right? Because we were paying a hundred or a hundred and ten?
It's an increase.
Not, go ahead.
What you're paying, this is, this is a new rental application. What you're referring to is your business license fee, which is two different fees.
Oh, I didn't realize that. So this is an incremental two hundred dollars. So I would, I would also then question the need for additional fees, to be honest with you. I think there's a fair amount of revenue that's being collected through our short-term rental process. I believe also that we do run a surplus, so, or we did last year run a surplus? I believe also that we do run a surplus, so, or we did last year run a surplus, and so I would question the need to have additional fees on top of all the other fees that we also pay. So the last comment that I'd like to make is, I do feel as a part-time resident that we are, let's just say, slightly prejudiced against, because we're not here to come in front of the committee on a regular basis, and feel like the representation is more for the full-time residents. Okay, so that's comment one. And just an example of that is what happened with the fees on the trash collection. Tripling those, to me, is excessive, but that's off the subject. And now I also feel, based on the ordinance that you've put in front of us, that we're not only prejudiced as a part-time resident, but now a part-time renter, and so I wanted to share that concern as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just a few to go. Scott Nelson.
Scott Nelson, 65, Persimmon Court. A little bit of my personal history. I bought at the end of, in 2012, and moved in at the end of the year, and we are full-time residents and voters. Since that time, two out of the seven lots or houses on our particular street, one is a six-bedroom, one is a seven-bedroom, both of those are rentals. I've seen a dissignificant degradation in my quality of life as a result of those rentals. Increased trash, bicycles all over the place, cars, noise, et cetera. Anyone who lives next to a rental knows what that is like. So I think there's absolutely an enforcement problem here. I've complained about these rentals, and it seems to have a limited effect on the trash and other mayhem that goes on at these rentals. So I strongly urge the council to incorporate significant or 24/7 enforcement on any kind of restriction or ordinance that's put in place. The second point I'd like to make is that many people argue about reduce property values by putting in a cap. And as far as I understand, the cap would not reduce the amount of rentals that are currently in place. But I think most people would agree that if you get to a tipping point where there's eighty percent or ninety-five percent of the properties next to you as a full-time resident, property values will go in the opposite direction, because no one will want to live here full-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Ross Sapell. And his team. How you doing, Ross?
In the spirit of the Low Country, we'll have ladies first.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelsey Entner. I'm actually slated to go after Ross, but Ross was kind enough to let me go first. I'm corporate counsel for Inspirato, and Inspirato currently operates seven properties on Kiowa Island, seven properties on which we have paid nearly $1 million in tax revenue. I'm here today with several of my colleagues because we have some serious concerns regarding a number of the changes that have been proposed to the short-term rental ordinance. And while we have several concerns, there's one in particular that we want to address today, and that is that there is no basis for singling out vacation clubs for restrictions, especially because that is counterproductive to the stated purpose and intent of the ordinance. The stated intent of the ordinance that was already referenced today is to promote public health, safety, and welfare, and to discourage nuisance and behavior issues associated with short-term rental properties in residential zoning districts. And as we've discussed, a lot of the issue centers around enforcement, but there is no basis for prohibiting clubs such as Inspirato while allowing Airbnb, Airbnb and VRBO and other public platforms to operate without any prohibition. Inspirato offers a level of screening and enforcement that those public platforms simply cannot offer. Before individuals can become members of Inspirato, they go through a sort of vetting process by which they must share personal information, financial information, and once accepted, they must agree to our terms and conditions and policies before they are allowed access to our portfolio of homes on Kiowa. In addition to that, we employ several full-time employees dedicated to our members and properties on Kiowa Island. Two of them live locally and are available 24/7 to respond personally to any issues that may arise, any of the enforcement issues that have been referenced today. In fact, Inspirato already meets or exceeds the regulations in the policy, but the policy prohibits Inspirato while allowing Airbnb and VRBO to operate without that prohibition. It makes no sense. Also, we are heavily invested in the Kiowa community. In addition to the tax revenue that we pay, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on the upkeep and maintenance of our properties. We do business with over 100 vendors in Kiowa. We bring a quality of visitor to the island that not only invests in the island while they're here, but we have had members come who have then bought property on Kiowa because they've witnessed firsthand how special this place is. We also engage in long-term leases with our landlords, and we pride ourselves not only on our long-term relationships with our members, but on our long-term relationships with our landlords. We are invested in Kiowa. There is no basis for singling out vacation clubs like Inspirato and prohibiting us from operating on the island. It makes no sense, and it is counterproductive to achieving the stated purpose of the ordinance. We would ask that the town council work on drafting an ordinance that actually achieves its stated purpose. Thank you.
If I could just, and this is, my comment is not legally binding, because I will need advice from attorneys, but I don't believe in the drafting of the planning commission amendment that we made with respect to vacation clubs, that the Inspirato model, which is different than some other entities on the island, I don't think that it is applicable, and therefore I don't think that that ordinance is or was intended to be applicable to Inspirato. But we can have, we should have that discussion offline to...
We would appreciate that, because the definition currently of vacation club does apply to Inspirato and would prohibit us from operating.
So I think we need to have that discussion, because while there is a different vacation club on the island that operates under a very different model, and that does, is the issue under consideration, and it is also possible, because I understand that you all have, in the last two months, announced a new model, that new model may be, in fact, more like the one that we have concerns with.
And we would certainly...
So we probably have to have that discussion.
We would certainly want to engage with that, because we do apply the same vetting process and have the same terms, conditions, and policies. We have the same investment for that new product. He's referring to a subscription service, which is a different payment model. It's more of a pay-over time, but we apply the same vetting process and the same in-person enforcement that meets or exceeds the regulations in the ordinance.
So we should have that conversation.
We would love to. We're invested in Kiowa and would like to stay.
And I kind of thought you knew that, only because one evening I received, within thirty minutes, three phone calls from three of your clients.
And I think that speaks to our long-term relationship.
All asking me the question of whether this was going to impact Inspirato, and I told them no, so...
Yeah, and we'd certainly want to engage in clarifying that, because as it's written, it does apply. Thank you.
But Ross, we still get to hear from you.
All right, I'm trying to try to make it worth your while. Good afternoon, Mayor. Ms. Tillerson, counsel, Dwayne, it's always a pleasure coming down to the town of Kiowa, seeing everybody. My name's Ross Sapell. I'm over at 359 King Street. I'm here today on behalf of Exclusive Resorts LLC, which is another...
I believe that this should be a homeowner's...
Yeah.
...and not...
Not a...
He is, if I may, he, it is a part of, a very important piece of this ordinance, and also it is actually the sole purpose of the follow-up action, and so I do think, you know, that he has, under our town rules, the same right to speak on behalf of the issue, because his client is impacted. So I would appreciate if you would indulge him.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. So, my client, Exclusive Resorts, their members have access to about a dozen properties on Kiowa Island. My client loves Kiowa and loves being a contributing part of the community, and our members and our business has a stellar track record on the island, for many of the same reasons that were just articulated. We have profound concerns about the ordinance as drafted. Last week, I sent a pretty lengthy document into the town. I'm not going to go through that in great detail, but I do want to incorporate that into the record today. But I want to take a step back and give a little bit of perspective on short-term rental regulations generally.
Within your five minutes?
Absolutely. We timed this before we started. Kiowa Island is just the latest of many jurisdictions to get into the short-term rental regulation game. I am on the City of Charleston's Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'm probably going to miss my meeting tonight, but that's okay. The City of Charleston, for perspective, spent about a year and a half working on getting their ordinance right. We had multiple workshops, meetings, consultants, planning commission sessions, because Charleston's complicated. This issue is complicated, as you've heard tonight. We are concerned by the process under which this ordinance has been developed. We want to participate in that process. We want to make sure that all the information is on the table, not just for my client, but for some, you know, all the stakeholders that we heard from tonight. The product of the City of Charleston's time and energy spent in this process was a very strong and defensible ordinance, legally. You may disagree about the way that the lines were drawn, but everybody can agree that what was enacted by council was not rushed, it was thoroughly studied, it was thoroughly vetted legally, and it's been upheld. And we can contrast that with some other jurisdictions in the area who will go unnamed, that I'm personally involved in right now, that didn't take such a careful approach to adopting their ordinance, and there's massive litigation that's ongoing over those issues right now. It's a complicated issue. We heard the word "taking" discussed earlier today. This is a very serious issue that we're concerned about. We heard a lot about caps. Well, as it relates to my client, based upon the way the current ordinance is drafted with regards to vacation clubs, there's no caps. We're banned. Get off the island. That's what this ordinance says to us. There's serious issues with that, treating vacation clubs differently, when, as, you know, was just spoken about before I got up here, as a functional matter, there's very little of any difference between the way that these models actually function. In fact, if anything, our model has a higher quality of visitor. It's a more thoroughly vetted type of visitor. My client has substantial, very expensive investment-backed expectations in their properties on Kiowa, and the proposed ordinance on offer threatens that directly. The ordinance would cause all of our properties currently to become what are called non-conforming uses under the law, which are never a great place to be, because all you need to do is violate a provision of the ordinance, and all of a sudden, you're no longer allowed. One of the problems that we have is this accommodations tax issue, and I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty weeds on this tax issue, but suffice to say, we don't believe we're legally required to pay accommodations taxes due to our unique model, but by requiring us to do so in exchange for continuing on as a non-conforming use, we're left in a Hobbesian dilemma, right? It's either pay a tax that you're not supposed to pay, or lose your constitutionally protected non-conforming use rights. Under our constitution, there's a doctrine known as the unconstitutional conditions doctrine, which says local government cannot cause you to forfeit one right in order to pursue another. We heard a lot today about enforcement and administration. The town of Kiowa, like most jurisdictions, especially most relatively smaller jurisdictions, already have enforcement problems under the existing regime. So now what's being proposed is let's build a more complicated regime without investing in the associated enforcement resources. We have serious problems, but we want to work together. Let's tap the brakes, let's go to the drawing board. I think I've got a meeting with you all next week. I look forward to participating in that, and let's get it right. The town of Kiowa deserves a first-class ordinance like the City of Charleston, nothing less. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And just a question. When I read your documents...
Sure.
And this is probably a more complicated question, but ultimately, you don't consider your 4,000 members when they stay in our properties to be renters?
This is a very complicated question. What I would say, for present purposes, is that there are no rental transactions taking place on the island.
They're guests of you.
They're members of our organization.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey, we've got four more. Kelsey, and I can't read the...
She's both. She's both.
Oh, you were, oh, you were with Ross. I'm sorry. Okay. Beth Driscoll. Hi, Beth, how are you?
Hi, I'm Beth Driscoll. I own three residences currently, 4102 Summer Duck Way, 1 Cedar Waxwing in the Preserve, 4250 Mariners Watch. I have been on Kiowa for 30 years, owned up to seven properties. Those properties I have always considered to be my assets to use as I've needed to use them. I took a vacation day today to come to this meeting, because I feel like my assets are being taken all of a sudden, not to be used as I deem necessary. I think a lot of people, when they come to Kiowa, would like to be full-time, but there does take some time, and I have bought and sold properties as a way to stay on Kiowa until I can retire and be here full-time. So I have a perspective from being full-time for 25-plus years, but also having rental income that I want to use as I see fit from year to year, and I want to have that right, since these are my assets that are going to go towards my retirement. And if they're restricted, then I would ask the town to buy back my current three properties and let me start all over, because I have already lost money from the 2008 recession that I have not yet recovered. So the few assets that I have, I would ask that you don't restrict them further. They're not even at the value that I bought them at. So I am asking you to consider those people who come to Kiowa for the first time, they can't build the oceanfront house, but they'd like to buy some places, enjoy Kiowa like everyone here does, and sell and resell until they get to their final home, which is my goal. And I do plan to have a final home, but I'm not there yet. I'm in the process. And when I first moved to Kiowa, I was the youngest resident on Kiowa. So I'm representing, over the years, 25-plus. What I have seen is a total lack of enforcement, including coming into the front gate, and I know that there's been some reports saying that that number hasn't grown, but within a 300-mile radius, everybody knows the secret to get on Kiowa. That is as broad as, it's more than 300 miles away. People know, all they have to do is say, "I'm going to the resort, I'm going to the sanctuary." Sometimes they still say they're going to the... Sometimes they still say they're going to the old Kiawah Inn. I go every weekend at the sanctuary to have lunch. The number of cars there exceeds the number of parking spaces because people know how to get on Kiawah. Once they get on, they can park anywhere. The cap does not address people come to Kiawah to benefit from all the beauty of Kiawah without paying $1 for it. I've invested millions over the years, the assessment fees, the cost of all these properties. I feel like I need to have a voice to say, "I don't want someone else controlling what I need to do with my property." Because when I build on a lot in six years, I'm going to have to try to be able to get a license? I just feel like that's such an unfair practice because you're- unless you're going to zero down every year, start with zero, not let the previous rental become rentals. Everybody starts at zero. You put your property in a hat if you want to rent it, and you pull it out. That's the only fair way. Because otherwise, you're going to put everybody at jeopardy because we're all at different places with our properties. So, and I don't think you have the staff to do that. But what I do encourage is enforcement. I've seen two landscaping trucks that pulled up to Nighthairn Park, and they were playing soccer. And everybody on that field were workers from the landscaping crew. So, I don't see any enforcement as a first step. And before caps could be effective, enforcement is the very first step. Because even with caps, you're not going to control your next-door neighbor having 12 to 15 property- 12 to 15 cars on that property. So, all of the people that are wanting the peace in their neighborhoods, that's not the guarantee they're going to get with a cap. It's got to be enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have two people left. I have Gay and Jim Stathis.
We saw on the wrong sheet, I guess.
All right. I will cross that out. And then I have Emily Vandal. Did I get that? Emily, I think she's with- actually, I think with Vacasa. She's gone. All right. That's it for the people that signed up, but let me ask, is there anyone else who would like to- okay. Again, what, come up, give us your name and address?
Eileen Olenoff. I'm at 7 Greenswood, which is the historic district. I wasn't going to come up and talk because when I do, I get emotional, so I'll try to be calm. My husband would say, "Just state what you want to say." I'm getting real- I kind of got tired of listening. I wasn't going to say anything, but I got tired of listening to everyone came up who, "I own property, and I rent," and, you know, that's most to make us feel, "Okay, so you understand." Or you hear the realtors, or you hear the agencies. I don't rent. I live here full-time, and I know there's a bunch of us that do. It seems like we're getting pushed to the back, you all coming up here and saying, "Oh, it's my livelihood, I'm going to lose this," or "I don't have the right to do what I want with my property." How about our rights as just full-time people who want to live here, the rest of- I don't have any other houses? Why do I have something downtown? But I don't have anything that I go to. I'm here full-time. And there's enough of us that do, and I feel like we're not being represented. I thought it would be more of a give-and-take, and we'd have more of us, and we're not- I'm not hearing it, so I couldn't sit there anymore and not say anything. Couple of things, again, I think enforcement is a big issue, and I think what everyone's saying is correct, and I think that that has to be addressed, and before anything could even change, or even if you don't change it, that has to be addressed. And I'm not going to go into all the problems that happen because everyone has stated that. But I just get tired of also hearing that the renters, or the homeowners, or someone doesn't know the rules. So, they're- it's like ignorance is not right. So, if you're ignorant, you're stupid, but you know what's going on. You get the rules. And they need- that's one of the enforcements I think that would be really helpful. How do you get that? We were here in the 80s. We didn't put our towels out on the deck. We didn't, you know, we respected Kiawah, and I just don't think that's happening, and I don't know why. I don't know if they're not getting the information. I think they are. I think people are aware. You know, you see signs up, you know, you play by the rules. But again, I think it's a livability issue, especially for people that don't rent. And that's kind of like the- I don't think it's a small minority. I think there's a lot of us. And you all renters and agencies say you love Kiawah. Well, you're not going to love it any more than us. We're not here for the money value. We're here because it's beautiful, it's nature, it's natural, the people, and the environment. And hopefully, you guys have heard enough from us. Maybe I haven't contacted you, maybe I need to do that, you know, and others too, to hear that it is also people like me that need to get heard also. Because I don't think it was really represented today. So, all of you should be talking, and I know. But anyway, thank you.
Is there, before I stop, are there others? Okay, I'll assume they take first hand.
Thank you. I'm Paul Nelson from 410 Amaranth Road. On the face of it, I'm against the ordinance. But I hope during your discussion this afternoon, you will discuss exactly what the problem is your ordinance is trying to solve or mitigate. We've danced around it here, but I'd like to know what either the council or its commission believes the problem is we're addressing, as well as any other options that the commission considered to address the problem. And to the extent that they're not clear, why didn't we pursue those? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any others? I see the- sure, go ahead.
First of all, I owe you an apology. I think I sent an email to you, and I said Charlie. That was your credit.
I was trying to figure out who Charlie was.
I felt good about that.
Began with a C. I apologize.
I always feel good when I'm thought of as Charlie.
My name is Barb Waters. I'm here with my husband, Steve Waters, and we are part-time residents, hoping to go full-time in the next couple of years at 4108 Summer Duck. It looks like we have a couple of neighbors here. I, first of all, like to say that I'd like to think that I'm looking at this as a resident and as a non-resident. So, I don't have any beef one way or the other. I come with 40 years heading HR for a major company in the Minneapolis area, and if I had a nickel for every day that someone walked in my office and said, "Barb, we need a new policy. We need a new rule. We need a new something." And the first question I would say, after I got them unglued out of, you know, off the wall, or off the ceiling, or wherever they were hanging at the time, I would say, "Tell me what the problem is. I need to understand the facts. I can't help guide, or change, or advise unless I understand truly what the issues are." And what I still don't have, and I think all of us need to see, residents, non-residents, developers, real estate people, is tell us what the issues are. In the last five years, how many complaints have come to security, as an example, or Kaika, in any given year, like we're talking about today? I have no idea. Is it 10 a year or 10,000 a year? There's a big difference. Is it in a certain area of Kiawah, or is it everywhere? Is it certain times of year? Or all throughout the year? All of these are things that we need to study in order to know what the right answer is here. So, yes, I do believe, and I understand now, you know, you have to kind of come up with something in order to have a public forum on it, kind of seems a little silly to me, but a study, not spending a lot of money, but just understanding, what are we really dealing with here? Secondly, and it's been said, just because you restrict renters doesn't mean you're going to be in your happy place. You could have the neighbor from hell. It happens. That happens back in Minnesota even, where everybody's nice. It's true. We just don't talk to you directly. We just kind of go behind your back because we're Minnesota-nice. No, it's really true. And so, that doesn't do it for us. I also, right behind someone who mentioned another neighbor, we've been renting off and on, you know, despite about 16, 17, if we're lucky, weeks, but sometimes a lot less, and for 13 years. We've never had a complaint, ever. And when we talk about a number of cars, it's usually actually our full-time residents who live locally, and all of their family members come, you know, to spend the weekend on the island and go to the beach. I don't care. That's what we're at, a beach. You know, they are full-time residents. They live in Charleston. I'm super excited for them. My kids are in New York and Minnesota. And we don't get to do that. I don't get to have 16 cars. But it's the beach. And so, and I'm not mad about that. I understand some are. But honestly, we've never had any complaints, and we have full-time residents, quite a few, in our development, and they know it's- there's renters, and they come to know them, those people come back, they actually end up buying properties here. And I, like others have said, finally, I'm like- we're like a lot of people. We're not gabbillionaires. We're very blessed. But we could- we fell in love with this island. I came actually on a conference when it first started, it was two years old, with Frito-Lay, and fell in love from day one. I was just 20, 30-years-old, and I, you know, I didn't- couldn't afford it. We came back here and bought a place that we could carry and put three kids through college, and rent periodically to pay the high costs, with our hope that someday, we could either take that home or another home and be full-time residents here. So, I ask everybody, let's look at the facts. Let's see how serious this problem is. And if you've had a bad experience, that doesn't mean in the global island that anybody else has had a big problem, or it's once every 10 years. That's not worth changing everybody's lives and getting everybody angry on both sides and separating all of us. We're all residents here. And again, I'm underwater. We never expect to get our money back. We bought the highest property Nighthairn there was. We didn't know a crash was coming. But that's okay. It is what it is. So, we've got lots of rules, and I would say that the current rules and regulations we have between the county, the City of Kiawah, and the resort, or Kaika, pardon me, our association, we need to communicate and educate. Because I will tell you, that isn't happening through the property managers that are handling the rentals. They're not handing people a list of rules, they're not posting them in the, you know, in the cottages or the homes. Let's educate and enforce. And if we enforce, how many enforcements do you think will happen that this college party stuff might stop? Or you might get a bad- when somebody gets slapped with a $500 fine, or something such as that, even an owner, if they're egregious. So, let's try that. What do we have to lose? You've got plenty of money that comes in from our renters, quite frankly, right? That go into the coffers to supply this, right? They're paid- they paid much of this through rental, through accommodation fees, and the hotels and so forth. So, let's try it. And visiting in a year and 18 months, and if we say we had 50 violations last year, and next year, the next year we only had 10, then we know it's working, right? We know it's working. Or we need to tweak, or we do need to change the ordinance in certain areas of Kiawah. So, that's what I would ask the council and the mayor to consider, and all the residents of Kiawah. Thank you.
Thank you. And there were still a couple last hands. Let me get two more if we have it, and then we'll bring this part to an end. All right. And since I didn't see another hand go up, this will be our last speaker.
Hi, my name's Bill Duncan, and my family owns two properties on the island. One, 147 Hooded Morgana, and the other is 213 Glen Abbey. I did not have prepared remarks today, but one of the things that my wife and I were discussing, I think segues well into the last speaker. One thing that I would ask the council to consider, we've heard a lot of discussion and generalities thrown on rentals, and a lot of it is all rental houses are bad. And I- that's- those statements, I believe, are not based on really having all the information. We have been renting our house in Hooded Morgana for 12 years. There have been no complaints that were brought to us. That said, am I positive that all of the neighbors around us were always perfectly happy with things? No. And one of the things that I think might have been missed in preparing for the ordinance was were- did you engage any property managers and discuss best practices? And that is something that we would be more than willing to do, to improve what we're doing, and to make sure that we are being good neighbors. Because I think an accurate statement is really to say, "Good neighbors are good and bad neighbors are bad." And to say that just because you have a rental property, that makes you a bad neighbor, I don't think those comments are really based from a factual standpoint. We run our property ourselves, so we are personally screening our guests. We call in the guest pass, make sure that we don't have any more passes being called in than our house facilitates. We don't want extra renters in there, right? So, we're doing that screening. And the point that I'm saying is, I'm not hearing where council brought in those property managers and says, "Okay, this is the model for how we would like our 20% rental properties to be run." And so, I would just ask you to consider taking a step back and looking at that for a minute. Because otherwise, it just appears that we're saying all these rental houses are bad, and I just don't think that's accurate. Could we be a better neighbor? Well, everyone could be a better neighbor. That's something that is an ongoing process, but we certainly want to be viewed as a good neighbor on our street, and if we need to make improvements, we certainly would. So, again, just to summarize, I think something that needs to be looked at is just what is the model, and what is the best practice for how the town would like to see a property manager run one of the rental homes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will turn from citizens' comments to new business. And so, we will get into our discussion of the first item A, which is to consider approval of ordinance 2019-8, which is an ordinance repealing Article 15 General Offenses, Chapter 8 Short-Term Rental Permit and Regulations of the Kiawah Island Municipal Code by amending Article 14 General Regulations and adding Chapter 5 Short-Term Rental Applications and Regulations. Did you all get that down? We're going to start initially, Stephanie, you're going to just highlight, because between the first and the first version that we intended to have at the September meeting, which was called off, and listening to input that we've been getting, some adjustments were made. So, I think you're going to do just a quick summary of what changes have occurred in the ordinance, and then I will ask for a motion, and we can get into the discussion. While she's doing that, I really do want to thank all of the people who spoke. I mean, I think everybody was thoughtful, well-prepared. I appreciate the fact that we didn't just kind of rehash the previous speaker. And regardless of where we get in this, I appreciate regardless of which views you were commenting on, your willingness to do that, because not everybody wants to get up in front of 100 people and talk, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The council will take a few minutes to go over these slides. Is Janie glad we're there?
You're not on. You're not on.
It's on. Is that better? Yeah, it's better. I wanted to just give just a few slides in terms of the committee that worked on looking at revisions to the current short-term rental ordinance and why. This process started about January during town council. They have a retreat every year that is open to the public, and part of the goal for council was to look at revisions to our current short-term rental ordinance. We realized from a staff standpoint that there are things in there that we needed to fix- that there are things in there that we needed to fix and update and address overall. And some of our guiding principles as we were looking at what changes we need to make to the ordinance, and there were about four staff members in the council, person that was involved in this process over the last nine months or so. But as you all have mentioned, one of the things that the town is responsible for is the public health, safety and welfare of everyone that comes to the island, permanent residents, part-time residents, guests, daytime guests, overnight guests, et cetera. So looking at all of our codes that we have on the books, that's one of the things, and one of the, one of the things that we constantly look at when we're trying to make decisions is to ensure the public's safety. Also throughout the year, as part of council's goal is looking at the consistency with regards to promoting the Kiowa brand and standards. And while we're looking at this in our short-term rental ordinance, we also look at this in various other things that we do in working with the community association, with the resort and developers. Always looking at what, what is the brand of Kiowa looking back historically as, as well as today's terms. So in looking at our ordinance, we also consider that as our guiding principle. And also the balance between a resort, community, and a long-term residential community. Making sure that what we have in place focus on and appreciates that balance of what makes Kiowa a great place that we all call home. But trying to find that balance, improve compliance. One of the things that we struggle with a little bit, I think, as a town, is trying to make sure that everyone understands the dynamics between kind of the maze of case. What role does the town have versus what role the community association has? So one of the things with regards to our rental ordinance, we tried to balance those rules and regulations between both agencies. KICA has a role with regards to their covenants that they enforce, that we do not enforce. In the town, we have regulations. In our, in our ordinance, we have police powers, something that KICA does not have. One of the things that we have recognized, I think, over the last year is that we, as a town, we have to, while we still rely on KICA to, to manage certain parts of, or to assist with regards to certain parts of the ordinance, we realize that there's, that we need to kind of pick up the ball and pick up the step and, and enforce our ordinance. A lot of the things that we have with the community association, our ordinance is mirror, but there's things that, that we have that are different. Some have talked about the gate passes, which we have no control over. But we are working with the community association. I understand they're putting in a new system where we can work with the property management companies in terms of how many overnight passes are, are given out. We will provide that information to, to the community association. So we are looking at ways to work together with regards to improve compliance. And just keeping ahead of a, of a growing industry. In terms of the research, I think this committee, and I know Mr. Wydock will speak on that during his piece. We have looked at a lot of communities and what they're doing. And there's communities that, of course, have completely regulated out short-term rentals. There are some that are putting in caps and there's some that are looking at other ways of managing their short-term rentals. So we have looked at what other communities across the country are, are doing. So quickly, I just want to ask, when we put out this first draft, there were a lot of conversation about the draft. And so council did listen to those in, in the committee. And we went back and we made a second draft, which is available online. And we had a summary sheet that we tried to summarize the difference between the first draft and the second draft. And it was pointed out to me that there were something that we may have left out and just in terms of the definition. But as you can see here, the, the change from the draft is that the short-term rental business license, while they were not, while they were transferable if you sold your property, the new change that we recommend is that it's not transferable. So of course, if you have a license and you sell your property, the new owner, if they're located in an area that is capped, they would just check to see if there's any additional licenses available. If so, of course, they can apply for a license. If not, they would go on a waiting list. In addition, we narrowed the areas where the caps before. We included some areas, if you want to refer to the zoning classification as R2. We went back and we really looked at the map we have online that I hope you all have had an opportunity to look at, which shows where all the caps or where all the short-term rentals are located on the island that we're aware of. Because I, I understand there may be a few others out there. But the ones that we're aware of, which we have about over twelve hundred rentals that we, that we have, that we're aware of. And so when we looked at the revisions, we tried to look at areas that really currently operate as a tourist area. It doesn't make sense, make sense to include those in the caps. So that's why you would see a change in terms of what's, what's under the caps versus what is not under the caps. We have the three violation clause, the three strikes and you're out clause. And that would look at if we write a fine and this goes to a municipal judge and they find you guilty, then that is determined a strike. We did try to figure out how we make that determination and we base that on the judge. And one of the questions, I believe, was asked with regards to the thirty days. The state municipal judge and the state courts, and please, Dwayne, correct me if I'm wrong. But it gives the municipal, municipalities and the judge certain rights and abilities. For our municipal court, we can write fines up to five hundred dollars. That includes assessments. When you add, for example, a five hundred dollar fine and you add the state assessments to that, the fine is over a thousand dollars. It's a thousand eighty-seven, I believe. A good portion of that goes to the state. The judge does have the ability through the, through the state to imprison someone up to thirty days. As far as I know, that has not happened, that is not, that's a policy that generally most municipalities have in their ordinance when it comes to fines. So we currently already have this in all of our ordinances. It's just, we just basically transferred, well, not transferred, we just spelled it out in this ordinance like we do all of our other ordinances. We put what the, what the violations could be from a hundred to five hundred dollars. Staff will write the ticket, it goes to municipal court. The judge then makes up the decision. He or she can throw it out. They can increase if we didn't write it the, at the five hundred dollar amount. They can decrease it. There are a number of things that can happen, but it's up to the judge. And that is not up to staff, we just write the citation. We've also added a provisional license opportunity. This gives those that have lots that are unbuilt but can be developed on the right or the opportunity to be able to get a business license. This is a three-year license where they can go and apply. Once they have that, they will have three years from the time they apply for it to the time they get their CO. Is that correct, Chris? To be able to convert that to a short-term rental license. If they need additional time, there is a process where they can go and get a six-month extension. So what we tried to do is, we did listen to some of the concerns that came through when the first draft was presented to the public. And that was one of the things that we heard. And so we have gone in and we've made that adjustment. We have added an annual application fee. And part of that is that, again, as most of you have said, a lot of you have said today related to code enforcement, we realized that right now we have two code enforcement officers that work for the town full-time, eight to five, or nine to four, whatever their, their schedule. And their role is to enforce all of our codes right now. That includes zoning ordinance or business license code or building code. So they get stretched pretty far, you know, in terms of what, what they, what they were required to do, to include short-term rentals. So part of our recommendation for this is to look at, we may have to, and I'll come back to council at our November meeting, we may have to ask for additional staff that will focus on the enforcement of the short-term rental ordinance. And that's part of the application, the annual application fee, which is different from the short-term, short-term rental business license fee. We have looked into the destination of vacation clubs and I think the mayor have, have touched on that. We've added some prohibitions in regards to the operation of commercial businesses and short-term rentals. We are prohibiting that. And you might ask, well, what, what does that mean? Say, for instance, if you are hired, a catering company is hired to do an event at someone's home. They may rent out a house, because some of our homes have these great commercial kitchens in them, rent out the home and actually run the catering business out of that house in order to service that particular event. So those are the things that we're talking about with regards to a commercial business and a short-term rental. Overnight parking restrictions, what we're looking at with our new Citizen Serve. We have a new online program that we hope is more user-friendly for those property managers and owners that have to apply for their short-term rental. It's that we're gonna ask that for you to please identify how many vehicles are allowed on the rental. So if you have a garage that, that can be used, bump outs, paved areas, please identify those so that we will know that if you have, say, currently right now, a, a three-bedroom home that can allow up to eight guests, but then you're saying we can, we can have twelve cars, that's gonna be a red flag so that we're gonna go and check and say, maybe that's not, that, that's not possible. So we're gonna take a look at that. Advertisement short-term rental properties, we're gonna require some additional information, be advertised on the social media platforms to help with regards to your guests so that they know, and they know the expectation that they're gonna go to someone's home, they know that we can only bring six cars as opposed to ten cars. So we're asking for some additional advertising, advertisement for short-term rentals. Local contacts is really important. If there's a problem or issue from a public safety standpoint, we would like to know, how can we get ahold of someone? And if they can respond in a timely manner. And just providing proof of the required ATAX that's required through the state. And just requiring that that is, you provide proof that, that is paid for. I won't go too far into the code enforcement piece. I've already addressed that in terms of, of why, of why it is needed and what staff will be doing with bringing this back to council, asking for some additional staff. But again, we just want to, you know, let everyone know that with regards to code enforcement, how it's worked with, with the community association and understanding that we need to take, I think, a more aggressive role. When I say that, we have met with the property management companies probably about several months ago. I had my staff meet with the, or, or I put that, that option out to the property man, property management companies to meet with staff to discuss kind of code enforcement. So as a property management company, we've said, we don't necessarily wanna go out and write fines and citations. We want all the renters to be good neighbors. So how can we work together? You, as a property management company, have, you have a role. And if we come across and find an issue, we would like to be able to pick up the phone and call you and say, hey, this particular property, there's a problem. Can you please address it? At least one company that we've met with said, sure, we're, we're more than happy to, to do that. We do realize that if there's a property that becomes a repeat offender, at some point, we may have to write that citation. But our first and main goal is to try to get the property management companies to work with us. And so we have put that commitment out to all of them to say, you know, here, here are our rules and regulations. And we do meet with them every year before the season. We meet with the major property management companies before the season. We go through all the rules and regulations that they have, that information. And our new Citizen Serve, when they have to apply for that property, that short-term rental license, there's gonna be a checklist that they have to acknowledge, that they have read the rules and regulations. So we're trying to put a number of things in place, not only for the property managers, but for the owners and for the renters. We're currently working on revamping and updating our, our website to include a page devoted to short-term rentals. So we are, and we do hear you, we're trying to make improvements to that. And I believe that said, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right. With that, let's take this ordinance under consideration. Do I, and I would ask for a motion to consider the approval of ordinance 2019-8. Do I have a motion? I would like to make that motion, yes.
Yes, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, with that, we have a motion and we have a second. So I would like to, to open this up generally to the council members for discussion. And what I would like to propose is that we break our conversation into two subject matters. Because I think, as, as I think all of us have experienced the feedback so far, all of the feedback that we've gotten on the ordinance, except for the caps, I think has generally been fairly supportive and positive. And I think we know that under the caps, we have a lot more questions and issues. So if I can get the rest of my counsel down here. So what I'd like to do for the moment is, I'd really like to open it to discussion for the moment of, let's discuss where we are with respect to the, to the ordinance. Except, let's not talk about the caps yet. I'd like to get to that discussion. I'd like to hear where all of the council members are, where there may be some issues, concerns, where you stand with respect to support or non-support. I would like to lead that though, since Councilman Wydock has been the primary liaison with the staff group and, and the chief council member working on this. Chris, I'd like to let you start off.
Thank you.
And then with that, we will, we will go into a discussion. The goal is to figure out how close we are, where are there some issues? Are there any amendments that we want to change? Are there any things that we want staff to take a look at between now and the, and the next meeting? So, Chris, it's, go ahead.
First of all, can everybody hear me? Is this loud enough? Okay. Stephanie laid out very well the, the fact that a committee started looking at this back in January. And I have been the lead council member on that committee. It was an interesting discussion, because as she alluded to, it led to a bigger discussion or a deeper discussion than simply fixing language in an ordinance. So as I was participating in the committee, I started taking a look around our island. And I saw cars parked that didn't belong where they were parked. I saw garbage cans out for days on end. I saw homes looking more tired than cared for. I started to question my own assumptions about Kiowa. No longer willing to simply assume that Kiowa will always be Kiowa. I decided it was a bad idea for Kiowa's future to be influenced solely by the views of some who look at this island as a location for profit, more than a place to call home. As a full-time resident, I seek a voice in this debate. In researching this topic, the committee reviewed dozens of ordinances from other towns. I read every article I could find on the internet about this topic. And I tried to figure out, and I tried to understand how the rental world is changing in front of our eyes. I reread Kiowa's comprehensive plan, which is a formally adopted document meant to inform town leaders and professional staff about where to focus their attention. That document brought clarity to me about this issue because it defines what Kiowa is meant to be. This is the vision statement included in the comprehensive plan. This is the vision statement included in the comprehensive plan. The town of Kiowa Island is a residential community incorporating a world-class resort and a unique vibrant shopping village within a natural maritime setting that is being preserved and enhanced for current and future generations. Contrary to the assertion of some, Kiowa is not defined as a resort incorporating a few full-time residences. It is a residential community incorporating a world-class resort. To bolster this case, permit me to highlight what that same comprehensive plan says is our preeminent goal. On balance, the town's preeminent goal is to protect and preserve the residential character of the community while maintaining the benefits inherent in a resort community component. That statement closed the loop for me. I believe that goal is worth defending. So I support the broad outline of this ordinance. I'm happy to discuss areas where we can adjust it if necessary, and I look forward to the debate.
All right. Chris, thanks. I think what I must do without putting council members on the spot is maybe to start one by one and just basically give us a sense of, are there particular issues at this point? Where do you stand with respect? Again, we're still not talking about the caps, but where do we have any particular issues or things that you think we need to be adjusting, focusing, or are you in good shape? And Marion, maybe I'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We haven't even gotten to some of the public safety concerns of too many people. Okay.
Just check if you're at lights out.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that better? Okay, thank you. We haven't even talked about some of the public safety concerns that we have when rentals are occupied by too many people, about the lack of an exit plan from residents, and also the lack of an area for fire trucks to come up to the houses should there be some problem. But I'd like to just say why I'm here in Kiowa, why I live here. And the reason is quality of life, first and foremost, that's why I live here. That's why my husband and I chose this place to reside. In Kiowa, we plan our building design, we plan our retail outlets and amusements, and we strive to preserve our wildlife habits. Some of our residents are full-time, some are part-time, but each have the common goal to enjoy and preserve this quality of life. Resident homeowners, both full and part-time, bear the greater responsibility in maintaining our standards. We welcome visitors and we enjoy the economic benefits they bring, there's no doubt about it. It is my belief that controlling the supply of rental properties and property code enforcement are necessary to maintaining what we love about Kiowa. And that's, obviously, I do support our direction and wanted to make those comments.
Marion, in the ordinance, again excluding the caps, are there any particular areas of concern or things that you think we need to be looking at for change or?
Actually, I do not have any changes I'd like to make at this time. You know, we've had a lot of time to review this, and there's been a lot of discussion and study and questions, and I feel that what we have now is a workable plan.
Dan, what?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments. I think as has been stated today, and we've talked about this before, a big responsibility --
Yeah.
-- here.
Sorry, can you hear me? A big responsibility of ours, and it's been voiced many times here, is to enforce a clear and concise set of rules that applies to everybody. As our town manager has said, we cannot do that from nine to five, Monday through Friday, because violations occur Saturday night at midnight, not at noon on Thursdays. In order for that to be effective, I think we have to have annual licenses for people who rent short-term. And if there are violations and repeated violations, then those licenses need to be able to be removed. I strongly support the idea that a license ends when you sell your property. So regardless of anything else, the license is issued to you, the owner, and if you choose not to be an owner on Kiowa, that license no longer exists. All those things make sense, but we do have to make sure people understand what the rules are when they get here. And that's up to agents and anyone renting on their behalf. Those people have to be held accountable. Some have behaved, in my opinion, well, and some not as well in that regard, so that's I do think we have a fuzzy and problematic area, and this is because of new technologies and new issues. We have some vacation clubs who don't feel they should be paying certain taxes, like accommodation taxes. When you push through it all, a vacation club, in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, is a short-term rental disguised as a vacation club that does other things. Why they should not be paying taxes and everybody else is paying taxes is beyond me. We need to solve that with them. Obviously, we're going to have to have some discussions. So we have some work to do there because that's a big hole. And vacation clubs just didn't exist a decade ago, so we have to learn from this. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I'm in support of these issues in terms of short-term rental licensing, rules, and regulations in order that if your neighbor is a renter, they need to behave as if they were the owner or a good owner. Claus?
Yeah, I think I'll probably have a bit more to say.
Usually, I'm the one getting yelled at for that.
Light, light? Okay. I'll probably have a bit more to say, I think, on the subject of caps later, but on the first topic, first of all, I agree with what has been said here and what just about everyone in the public has said, which is, we need to focus on enforcement, and that will cost money, and I think it will be money very well spent. I think over the next month or so, that will be worked on, and I certainly have some pretty clear opinions. Someone said, it was a great line, this should not be, I forget, but it was a great line. This has to be, enforcement is a, it's not, we do a little bit more, it has to be done. I completely concur with that. Hence, I'm also very strongly in favor, and I know some people don't like that, I think the three strikes and you lose your license rule is excellent. I think there's no better way of keeping a homeowner honest and making him truly focus on what his renters are doing, even if he lives in Cincinnati, than that. I understand there may have to be some definition around it, though I think the provisional definition of having that be a conviction effectively in municipal court is a pretty good thing because it takes away a lot of leeway. I have one thing which I would like to, I don't think we've spent too much time on it now, but which I would like to raise and have discussed by staff probably, fully aware that that will probably take me off a lot of dinner party lists here in the, and that is the issue of fees. I will admit freely then, when I was first asked one-on-one, what do you think about this, my number was higher, and quite a bit higher than $1,500. I have no issue with the $200 for the R3 property, for the villas. My rationale is a very simple one. First of all, let's please, when we bandy about numbers, let's try and have them right. I've heard some crazy numbers about the money grab of the town, the numbers are just wrong, okay? We have the numbers, we're happy to provide them. This enforcement that we all, Stephanie do that if, when that's appropriate. The enforcement, if done right, will cost a fair amount of money. I can see only one group that should be paying for this, and that is those that rent out their homes and therefore cause the enforcement. This should not be socialized among other residents of Kiowa who do not rent. Therefore, you have to raise the money somehow. That, to me, is the application fee. So I'm in favor of this. I was higher, I can live with $1,500. I have something that I would like to have, to raise, and that we will look at over the next month. If licenses in the future are to be a scarce commodity, how scarce we will see, but if there is scarce commodity in any way at all, I personally, in our free-market system, know only one mechanism that regulates scarcity. If you're in the Soviet, in the old Soviet Union, you allocate, and that didn't work. The only mechanism that works is price, price. Now, you can't go crazy, but I think if we find that a certain number of licenses, maybe a big number, but a certain number of licenses is all that is available before it goes to a waitlist, for those that apply for new licenses, there should be a threshold, if you will, to get in. I would like to see for new license applications, for those who haven't rented here for 10 years or 20 years or 15 years, I would see a, I would like to see a first-year bigger, higher application fee, followed then by the regular annual fee. I think in my mind, that is primarily driven by my desire to not see hoarding of licenses. So I think that's something, I wanted to bring that up, I think that's something we'll probably look at. I may have no, I haven't discussed that really with anyone else, I may have no quorum here on the council, but that's how I feel about it.
Chris?
I have nothing additional. The details of the ordinance I'm comfortable with, given I was pretty involved in the drafting of it.
All right. And, you know, I've got just a couple of things. And first of all, again, we're not talking about the caps yet, so I think the revised ordinance language that we've got in front of us is, I think, is a good job by the team. I think it's, did I, yeah, I told you, usually I do get yelled at for this. You know, it needs to be recognized that probably 90% of what is here, we already have. I mean, a big part of this was trying to clean it up, rewrite it for two reasons, one, so it would be more enforceable, but also because we were just trying to make it more clear to our renters, our rental owners, and our property managers, what were the expectations that we were trying to hold them accountable for. So there is a lot here that hasn't changed, but I think the things that we did change were all things that we heard a significant desire for. Parking, parking has been a big issue on the town and on neighborhoods that are dealing with rentals, and a big part of that is because as rentals have moved into the single-family R1 world, you're basically moving them into homes that were designed with the ARB for two people, you know, a couple bedrooms and people, and would park in the garage. And what's transpired over time is that those properties are converting into homes that are being used for 10 to 14 people, bringing four to five cars. The garages are normally shut off and not allowed for the renters to use it, and now we end up with situations where it's really taken away from a lot of neighborhoods as cars are parking, and we know which ones, cars are parking in the trees and in the mulch and in the front yards and everywhere, in some cases everywhere but driveways. We also have a safety issue here. Chief Walson and I have talked a number of times about the need to make sure that parking is done, and we're talking overnight parking here, we're not trying to deal with what somebody does during the daytime, that the fire district has the ability to actually fight a fire on a house at night and not be blocked out for a long distance because they can't get that. So I think we've done a good job there. The two areas I have a problem with, that I would like to see some continual discussion, Dan, you raised one. I do think we have some cleanup we need to do in the language around vacation clubs, and I think you saw the reason why, that we have one club who I believe is impacted by our change, and another one who thought they were that I don't think, and our language needs to get cleaned up so that the people even here understand what's the difference. And the difference is that one of those entities does not believe that they are in the business of providing accommodations to transients. They believe they have a club. And that club has 4,000 members who are guests in their house, and it's a very different model, and they would probably argue that they don't come under any of these regulations because they don't rent, they don't owe any fees, they don't owe any accommodations taxes, and they're essentially a commercial entity. So we need to clean that language up. And Claus knows that I'm on the other, my instincts are on the other side on fees, and I fully, Claus, appreciate what your drivers are on the fee. My concerns on the other side, I don't want to turn this into an issue where we're trying to raise, this is not a revenue-raising issue to me. What I want to make sure is that whatever costs that we put in place are there because we need it to offset our own cost of whatever it is we're doing, and that we need to recognize that while we have, we have a lot of rental units that are making, and we have some that are making, grossing over $400,000 a year, but we have others that are, you know, they're not, they're making $40,000 a year, and I got to believe after the rental entities take their pound of flesh and everywhere else, $3,000, $1,700 bucks is a pretty big piece of change. So on that one, I don't have an amendment to make, but I think what I would, if you agree, Claus, what I'd like to, and the others, is maybe suggest that the staff with the council liaison, put together some options, maybe look at the question of what are our costs, what are the revenue impact, and incorporate into the second reading something that probably tries to accommodate what I think others on this table are trying to accomplish, but not overreach in terms of costs. And I don't know where the rest of you.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with staff taking a look at that and seeing if we can tweak it in some way.
I can do that.
Those are the only couple changes that I have, and otherwise, while it's not in the, specifically in the document, the thing that we heard critically from people was the need for us to up our game on enforcement, and I think one of the fundamental changes that has to happen here is that I think in the past years, the town and Kika have been kind of in this looking at each other to say, well, which one of us is going to step up and enforce? And we've both had different advantages and disadvantages. Kika has 24/7 coverage, but they frankly can't do diddly to somebody when they catch them. The town has the opposite, we only have eight to five coverage, but when we do something, we can find them and we can actually make it hurt. So I think the town, as part of this, is going to have to take on the primary responsibility for enforcement. I think we're going to need to have the right resources so there is coverage at nine o'clock at night when somebody's got a problem. And I already have told the rental entities that if they are willing to work with us, we are willing to work with them and try to approach this in the way of solving the problem, not trying to just write tickets all day. So I think you all did, on this part, I think you did a good job, and with the last few changes that were made, I'm certainly supportive of this part of the ordinance.
I'm writing down, because we're going to have to revise the motion at some point, is that correct?
If, we don't need to revise the motion, if those two things are simply things we direct staff to do over the next couple of weeks. So one is cleaning up the language around vacation clubs, and the other is the application piece.
Okay, very good.
All right, any other comments on, and then we can turn to caps.
That should be a short discussion.
Yeah, you go for it. You got a couple comments, and I got to step out.
Let me start the discussion on caps with the following comments. I'd like to point out one fact that seems to be consistently misrepresented over the last couple of weeks. No one is suggesting that we should ban short-term rentals. No one is suggesting that we should try to reduce short-term rentals. We are trying to manage the growth of short-term rentals. This island is made up of different groups, residents, non-resident homeowners, some of whom rent out their homes, most don't, and visitors. All these groups deserve to be heard. This ordinance does just that. Rentals can continue in most of R2 and all of R3 with no restrictions. Rentals are allowed to grow in R1 and R2 up to 60%, 60% above today's level. I think this approach honors all those voices. To the people who argue that we should allow unlimited rentals, I ask you, how does that recognize the concerns of full-time residents? How would that position compromise? How is it consistent with Kiowa's vision and preeminent goal? It isn't. The unlimited rental position relegates full-time residents to the role of silent partner, forced to accept whatever is foisted upon them without raising objection. is foisted upon them without raising objection. Caps and/or bans on short-term rentals is an issue that a lot of towns are dealing with today. Communities across the country are having the exact same debate that we are, with the same arguments advanced and the same battle lines drawn. Those who have a financial interest in renting out their homes, they want there to be no limits. Full-time residents of these towns want their concerns heard and their rights given at least some consideration. All of these towns, in one way or the other, have restricted short-term rentals. This list is by no means exhaustive. I could have created a dozen of these slides. Let me mention a couple of these in detail. Palm Desert, California, this is a quote from their website, "On December 31, 2019, all existing permitted short-term rentals within R1 and R2 zones will terminate. After that date, all short-term rentals will be prohibited within those two zones." Hilton Head. Hilton Head has not historically restricted short-term rentals island-wide, but in the last couple of years, five gated communities within Hilton Head have taken steps to cap or to ban them. The most recent, Hilton Head Plantation, voted in just the past month by a greater than two to one margin to ban them altogether. Anaheim, home of Disneyland, passed a hard cap on July 19th. They are prohibiting any new short-term rentals. Sullivan's Island doesn't allow short-term rentals. Pacific Grove, California, on the Malibu Bay, set a citywide cap of 250 homes, three percent of their housing stock. Communities across the country, especially those in high-end tourist areas, are taking steps to limit the proliferation of short-term rentals. If you're counting, that's 13 cars in a four-bedroom home. This picture was taken on a weekday just past 7:00 AM. Sadly, this situation, while extreme, is not unique. Imagine for a second that you live next door to this house. Would your quality of life be impacted? What if you were trying to sell your home while you live next door to this house? Do you think anybody would buy it? Speaking for myself, and as a nod to Charlie, who I didn't know was going to raise the issue, I believe in the tipping point theory. I believe at some point, an increasing number of rental properties will hurt this island's valuation. At some point, full-time residents who call this home will leave, unhappy with the noise next door, the trash piled high and visible, car is parked in the mulch. I can't tell you the exact percentage when that will happen, nobody can. But I believe there is far greater risk to Kewa's long-term brand if we permit unlimited rental properties at the expense of residential homes. I believe turning our back on our vision statement is a mistake. My focus isn't today or tomorrow. It isn't this year or next. I'm focused on the long view. I think we have to think strategically. I believe there will be a price to pay if we do not protect and preserve the residential character of Kewa. If we allow this town to drift into something other than a high-end experience, we will all lose eventually. The very traits that attract visitors who become owners, the beautifully maintained homes, the lush landscapes, the picture-perfect scenery where nothing looks out of place, will be compromised and eventually replaced with a certain averageness, a middle-of-the-pack experience that neither wows nor excites. I believe if we do not protect the residential neighborhoods on this island, our property values will suffer. For those of you who oppose caps, especially to those of you who make your home elsewhere on a full-time basis, I ask you this question. Is there any level of rental properties that would make you uncomfortable where you live? What if one out of every four homes on your block was a rental home, cycling new neighbors through every seven days? Would you be concerned? What if it were one out of every three? At one out of every three, odds are you will live next door to a short-term rental. How about if the saturation level crept up to fifty percent? That's every other house. Would you want to be a resident in that town? Is twenty percent the right number? I don't know. What's more important to me at this stage isn't the actual number, it's the architecture. We need to give future councils a tool to manage this issue, to assess the state of our town on an annual or biannual basis, to determine if we remain a desirable location where people want to live, not just to invest money for a return. I don't want a future council or the community at large to have the uh-oh moment. The realization that change has overtaken us and our ability to respond is limited or nonexistent. I don't want to be the frog in the boiling pot of water who realizes too late he's in a no-win situation. At the tipping point, property values will suffer, and every owner on Kewa will feel the pain, including those who want to rent out their homes. Let me close with a story, a true story. California Association of Realtors has debated the need to require a new disclosure form from sellers, a declaration under penalty of perjury of every rental property in the neighborhood so that prospective buyers know what is next door and across the street. The industry has expressed two concerns about this requirement. First, by requiring such a declaration, the people who live near or next door or across the street from a short-term rental, their property values will suffer. And second, failure to make such a declaration and disclose such a condition could expose a realtor to liability from unhappy buyers, who soon discover the home they purchased for their quiet enjoyment is in fact located next to a business that affects their quality of life. Let me read the closing portion of an article written by a leading California realtor, Barbara Nichols. Ms. Nichols is a real estate broker. She is an expert trial witness on trials for real estate matters. She is a published author and an advocate for towns and neighborhoods to have the right to determine their own destiny. The real estate industry needs to take a stand to protect residential zoning laws against short-term rentals. Without this protection, property values will decline and cause neighborhood stress and disruption. I think she's right. That completes my comments.
Claus, I'll start. Let's go ahead and get out any other concerns or issues. Claus, I'll start. You're in.
You know, just a few words why I don't think it comes as a great surprise that personally, I am very much a believer in Kewa, certainly parts of Kewa as a residential community. It was certainly marketed to us when we bought, a residential community, no commercial activity, and so on and so forth. I would also say for those who argue it's a resort community, there are things that are hard to define. So I will do what people often do, which is go back to, I think, a 1964 Supreme Court decision, and I will say, it's hard to define what the residential community is, but if you drive through the second gate, I know it when I see it. That's a residential community. And I believe that residential communities ultimately get destroyed if you have a certain number, whatever that number may be, of highly transient, short-term rentals. I think long-term rentals are a very different story. So personally, I'm in favor of this. Now, I will also say that as a councilman, and hearing the concerns of constituents, I feel much more relaxed in standing with a cap ordinance because I'm looking at the numbers. And what I'm hearing is concerns that smack, that do not seem to be reflected in reality. Let's look at some reality here. Apparently, according to many, having the ability to rent is absolutely critical. Well, thirteen percent of homes in R1 have a rental license. Thirteen, one-three. So these other eighty-seven, most of whom are not residents, because we don't have that many residents, they are, they are owners who are non-resident, as by the way, I was for fifteen, sixteen years until last year, they don't rent. I hope they don't rent because they don't have a license. Given how we have restructured, under Chris's leadership, the proposal to include the percentage increase on as-yet undeveloped lots, that frees, in very round numbers, about 200 or so licenses for growth. And I will tell you in a moment of levity, when I told my wife that, she basically said, why don't you guys man up and pass something that really restricts short-term rentals? Because this is way too many. However, that is the proposal. So when I look at that, thirteen percent are currently asking for a license to rent. We have room for 200 more, give or take, to grow. I do wonder what we're taking. I do wonder whose rental livelihood we're taking away here, because you guys all can still continue to rent, and 200 more can continue to rent. So my point is, is just the way the committee decided to structure this proposal, I think minimizes hardship, and that's why I'm in favor of it.
Any changes, any considerations?
No.
All right. Dan?
Thanks for the chance to talk about this. The first person who spoke this afternoon, Alan Allred, said that he felt the long-term values, real estate values, in this island would be positive if the community reigns, remains principally an attractive residential community. However, if it becomes primarily a rental community, the consequences to us all will be negative. And he talked about negative not only in your values, but also in what it's like to live here for your family and those values. So the council, under Chris's work here, has said, okay, we think a cap, which at this moment is not restrictive at all, has some value. So I want to challenge the professional real estate people in the room. My good friend and neighbor, Ellen Walkley, spoke earlier about her opposition to any cap for any reason, because it's gonna hurt real estate sales. I would ask the professional realtors here to come back to this council during the next month with an alternative that makes sense, because what we're trying to do is prevent the tipping point. The minute this community becomes a rental community, we have a problem. If a cap doesn't make sense to you professionally, you're in the business, what does? Because we need an answer. And this is the best answer we've got today, but it may not be the best answer. It's the only one we've thought of, okay?
I think the point about the number of rentals permitted is really significant. When you think about thirteen percent existing today, and we still allow an increase of 202, that's a lot of rentals. The R3 districts are primarily rentals and have been traditionally. And I feel that the caps that we're suggesting are really not going to hurt people as much as it would seem.
All right. Any, do either of you have any changes, considerations, things you think we need to improve?
No, I don't.
Well, look, I want to weigh in also, and first of all, acknowledge the work that everybody's done. And I think some of the changes that were made between the first and second preparation of this, you know, I think that there have been a couple of good changes in the last month. One of the things that we heard from only a few people, but very passionately, and it was clearly an understandable issue, was the concern about people who had purchased a lot and with the sole purpose of fairly soon building a rental on that lot. And I think we made a good change to deal with that. I think we also stepped back here and decided to include all of the developed lots on the island as part of initially determining the amount of licenses. And I think that's, that's an important issue. I have to, I mean, I have struggled with this. I've read every email. I've listened to every phone call. I, I've gotten some I wish I hadn't gotten. But I know that everybody's been absolutely sincere and I think pretty passionate in their concerns. For those people who are opposed to the caps, the, I've heard mainly two issues. One has been the economic issue, that, that if we do this, that on the, on the short end, if caps are put in place, we're going to see a reduction in property values. I have tried to ascertain whether that is the case, whether that is likely or not. And, and I think a little bit like Dan, I've been unable to. I have, in the last couple of weeks, we have sent out questionnaires to four of the major rental, or four of the major real estate organizations that, that handle Kewa. One of them wrote me back a very good, very thoughtful, very complete response to about two pages of questions that we're trying to understand, what happens if we put caps in, what happens if we don't put caps in? If we put them in, when would we be affected, and so on. From, from the others, I did not get either any response at all. Or I got a response that, that responded to one or two of the questions, but not the whole thing. So, so I'm interested into Dan's point. I would certainly love to hear more from the real estate organization. But I will tell you that even when they didn't answer, the one thing they all said in common was, we have no data. We have, we have no research, we have no statistics, we have no analyses that will actually tell us what will happen. But I'm still not diminishing that. So, so I do support this. And when I look at it, there are a couple of things that, that are driving me. The first one, is it consistent with the best interest of the town? And I do go back, I think, to the same things which Councilman Wydok showed you, which is that we have a comprehensive plan, we have planning and zoning requirements that for the areas that we want to, we are recommending putting in the caps, that they are inconsistent, they are consistent with, with the intent to try to protect and preserve the residential nature. I also asked the question, are we taking a reasonable approach? And I think that the, that the recommendation has tried to do that by many things, making sure that people who currently are renting have the ability to, you know, rent their properties out forever, as long as they, they keep their rental licenses. The fact that we established the caps initially at a level much higher than where we are today so that we could in fact protect anybody who currently, currently is renting out. I also want to make sure that we reinforce the fact that we are not taking away or reducing the number of rentals on this island. If the caps, and there are assumptions under everything, but, but if the caps were adopted, and we, over the next 10 years, 15 years, we build out the island, and we need to remember we've got about another 1,200 and some properties yet to be built on this island. Some of those R3s, which are going to be predominantly rentals, some of them R1s, very few R1s. But over the next 15 years, as this island builds out, and if you assume the 20% cap for, for single-family homes, and you consider all the others, the R3s, the Duneside and Turtle, that they all continue to have the same ratio, that, that means that the number of rental properties on the island will increase another 50%, even with these caps. So now, is 50% enough? Is it too, I don't know the answer to that. But, but I certainly would argue that even with these caps, we are putting a lot of room in here for, for additional growth. The other thing I would, would stress is that I have no idea whether twenty percent's the right number or not. I mean, I'll be the first to admit that there's some science behind that. There's some, there's looking at other towns. I mean, we didn't just pick it out of a hat. But, but there is some level of, of guess to that. But under this process, we do have the ability that what we now have in place is a mechanism. A mechanism by which the, our residents can now have some say over the mix between single-family properties and rentals. And if in the future, if two years from now, or five years from now, eight years from now, some combination of our, our residents and property owners and the real estate world says, "You know what? Twenty's the wrong number, it needs to be twenty-five, or it needs to be thirty." There's absolutely nothing that prevents a future town council with the direction of their constituents, there is nothing that protects a new town council from coming in and saying, "We're smarter five years from now than when we, what we were in 2019. Let's change that, let's change that cap." So as I look at this, I'm comfortable that we're doing something that we have the ability to adjust. And under all of the analyses that we've done here, the earliest, unless just something crazy happens, the earliest that the caps would ever, under any scenario, the earliest that the caps would ever be hit is somewhere between four and seven years from now. And that's just based on how many additional caps we have and how many properties are being marketed, how many of them sell as, as rentals. So, so we're doing this, I think, in a way, or I think it's been recommended in a way that allows the community, with the real estate professionals, to step back for a year or two or three, get a sense of how this is working. Maybe we're making the worst mistake in the world, maybe not. But I think this has been designed in a way that there's a period of a few years here to figure it out and see if, see if we've gotten right. So, you know, on that basis, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable that this is addressing something that we have heard from a significant number of, of our property owners. I don't pretend for a minute that it's a slam dunk on either way. I, I understand the, this community is really split pretty well down the middle on this one. But I think at least at this point, it's, it's a wise thing to do and, and so I'm supportive of it. Any other comments? So the only thing, at this point, four changes that we would want to see are the license fees, take a look at that. The vacation club piece. And I think you would be bringing together something more specific around the staffing. And again, it's a second reading will be coming up, so there's still more opportunity for people.
And we will publish again in advance of that meeting.
Right. Any other comments? All right. In this case, I'm going to ask Petra to go ahead and take a roll call vote in alphabetical order.
Councilmember said.
That's alphabetical?
It's not. Yes. That would be the first time in living memory that I've gone first. I was not ready for that, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going by my list.
And how does your list work? It starts with S or what?
I support the ordinance as written with the recommendation for the changes.
That's a yes.
Just to be clean.
No, we don't need to change the motion for that because we didn't amend it. We've just got these as issues.
What was, the motion was to recommend, to approve the ordinance.
It was, I'm first reading.
I'm first reading.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so just include that because Ms. Conley added some additional things in her approval. Just to be clean for the record, make the motion. To amend your motion.
So I, my, I would amend my motion to approve the ordinance 2019-8 with two directions to staff to look at the vacation destination club issue and the level of fees that have been published.
Second.
All right. Now Petra, will you redo the?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigitte. Councilmember said.
Yes.
Councilmember Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Wydock.
It'd be funny if I said no, though, wouldn't it? It'd be funny if I said no, but yes.
I don't think you get a lot less. All right. So that, so that is approved. All right. Then we need to move to the second item, which is related to this and it's, there's sort of an awkward process here. This is a, to consider approval of ordinance 2019-07, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 12 Land Use Planning and Zoning of Town Kiowa Island. And this requires a, us to convene into a public hearing for just a moment. So the way this will work, John Taylor, who is our town planner, will do a quick presentation overview of the item.
Yes.
I will then convene a public meeting, a public hearing. A public hearing is really like citizens' comments during the public hearing. Anyone who has a comment can do that. As soon as that's done, we go back in regular session and we will then handle the item. Does anybody need to take a two-minute restroom break? Okay. Let's, promise everybody will come back if we do? Okay. Let's, let's take a, let's take a, let's take a three-minute break if we can, okay?
Are we off the record here or on the record? Okay.
We're still in record.
I wasn't expecting you to cover that.
Oh, no.
I understand.
I don't know, I've been thinking about it and I should. And if you trust it, listen.
Well, what, something you'd like to speak?
No, he had the list. We may have given batch. Much, oh, here it is.
Much, I don't think there's a question.
The point is, as a real estate agent.
It's going to affect the property values.
Then I've just voted against myself.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
But you have a two percent license to build here. Thirteen percent, thirteen percent. Just for the total.
Right, right. Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Consider.
We should be resolved with that.
Plenty of.
I read it when we put the food in also, license. I, I for one, that's.
So there's a.
We did see the first.
We have eight different for you guys.
And.
We have lots to create.
This is a different.
I believe the way it's, when, when it's, when it's.
But, but you know, but I keep on questioning.
It would be bad if you went to thirteen percent.
I was thinking.
Ooh!
That's pretty sad.
Except the city.
All of my friends, through the century, all of my friends.
Long residents.
They don't want to pay any R-two.
It's a, it's not a representative sample, okay?
Our two.
Thirteen percent.
Only thirteen percent.
We don't want to.
That's getting seriously.
That's going to be a forty.
Plus, I knew it was.
Sure.
Speed.
It's a small, it's a small, it's a small.
Plus, the R-two is definitely.
That's a detailed, that's a detailed question that I guess.
Three forty-one licenses today.
I know.
And this ordinance, the numbers were allowing two hundred.
Three years to take.
Tell me. Three forty-one today.
You have to take your notes.
What?
You can't.
No, you cannot.
Two hundred and two.
If you don't, it's two hundred and three.
It can be extended.
Why are by one divided by three forty-one?
Thanks, we're done.
Fifty-nine percent.
I think I actually said almost.
I don't think Chris's question, I don't believe it is, was that the official license. If you have one and then you sell it off, you go with the one.
No.
No. It should be.
Well, they said the license doesn't run with the property.
For a homeowner.
I'll take a look. I'll take a look. But let me intend to.
Of course, you say two hundred, a hundred dollars and he's owned by undeveloped. So if he tomorrow says, "Okay, I'm going to give my money down and I recover myself, if I can convey it, sell it off."
Yeah, no, he can't convey. That's the question. Well, I'll.
I think enforcement is actually.
Enforcement, enforcement to me will take care of, frontline will take care of this. Enforcement's wackable. It doesn't change the behavior, it punishes the behavior, but it doesn't stop it.
That's not, it's not just that.
We disagree. I think it's wackable.
I think we're playing.
We can't.
We can't. And I will tell you, there are ways, I have great folks in the police. If someone uses the license for their, because they have companies, they have changers.
The only people who are going to.
It's also simple.
You were.
It's a.
They stole that money.
But I agree with that. I think.
Now, we're going to study.
It's a conflict.
We think.
I know, but say you have.
Fine, I'm going for free. It's kind of anxious.
You didn't want to get a license.
And then I had two hours, so.
Right.
Now, when it's, when it's.
I think it's.
Our, our twenty, our twenty percent. Our twenty percent.
His dad was standing.
I don't know.
Thirty percent.
I think that changes character once you.
Yeah.
You're making.
You're making.
It's.
He is.
He's doing that.
They can.
Yes.
I know. Yeah.
Also, there's a lot more. We've been here about the same length.
This is really.
Six or seven years before that.
Yeah.
No, it's whatever they have. And maybe.
Yeah, but there's also a lot of rental houses on.
And I think.
You don't give a rate.
It's the heart. There's a, there's a.
There's.
There's.
There's. That's.
Just like the heart.
I'm not.
I just think.
All right, let's, all right, everybody, let's reconvene here.
All right?
Yep, I'm ready for you.
So just regarding the zoning ordinance, so the, the short-term rental proposed changes have a few things that impact the zoning ordinance. And so what the planning commission has reviewed is what's before council and council has the ability to make recommendations for the zoning approval. And so specifically, there are three things that touch on the zoning ordinance applications in this request and that's section 102, which is the principal uses. And that has to do with the destination club and vacation club as a, as a principal use. The second would be the creation of section 12-107, which would be proposed rental application regulations and associated with the caps. And then the final would just be amending the definition sections that would include proposed definitions that are included in the proposed rental ordinance. And so pretty much the zoning amendments that are before you are sort of paralleling what council would presumably take as a consideration for the rental ordinance. And so just for your clarity, the planning commission did approve a six-to-zero unanimous, unanimous vote on recommending approval to council.
All right. So this has been recommended by planning commission for approval by the town council. So at this point, I need to convene a public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All right. Okay. At this point, we are in a public hearing.
You have to pass it, you have to vote?
What is that?
You have to take a vote?
Do I? No, I don't. So at this point, if there is anybody who would like to speak on this particular issue, you are free to approach the podium, give us your name and address and any comments. And I am, I'm seeing none, but I am looking just in case. I don't know whether I have to come back and get you or not. Darn, I should have gone faster.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver and Town Council. Appreciate the opportunity again to speak on behalf of this proposed suite of zoning text amendments. Again, my name's Ross Appel. I'm here today on behalf of Exclusive Resorts LLC. We are deeply concerned about the manner in which these zoning ordinance amendments unfairly single out and target vacation clubs, which may or may not meet the definition of what, what our business conducts. Kiowa, we heard a lot of discussion today in the prior hearing about how, you know, the, the reason for treating us differently is this, this question of whether or not the town can capture accommodations taxes from us. We don't believe that that's a legitimate reason, under the Planning Act, to single out vacation clubs under the zoning powers for purely revenue-related requirements. I mean, zoning is intended to regulate land use and land use-related impacts. It's not a government finance mechanism. So we have concerns about the use of the zoning powers to essentially ban us from the island and relegate us to a, to a non-conforming use, the continuity of which is then predicated on the payment of a tax that we believe is not. on the payment of a tax that we believe is not legally imposed on us. So, long story short, there, there are just a, a smorgasbord of legal problems that we see here as it relates specifically to us. We look forward and hope to be able to work through some of these issues with the town. We do not want to get into a adversarial position with the town at all. However, my client does a lot of business here, they've invested a tremendous amount of money in the island, they've given back to the island in a variety of ways, you know, accommodations taxes aren't the only way that a member of the Kiowa community gives back. So, we want to work through these issues, but as stated, we, we must state our strong opposition to the zoning ordinance amendments that are before you tonight, and we look forward to continuing to work with the town, the town's staff, and the town's attorney on working through these issues. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Any other speakers during the public hearing? All right.